School District Office of the Superintendent Agenda for the Board Workshop. Administration Office at 2400 Willow Street in North Rock, Arkansas. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the meeting will be held via Zoom video conference for participants. Viewers will be able to watch the North Rock Facebook page live screen. Today is Thursday, August 6th, and we're starting promptly at 5:30. And the board want to remind you to always stay safe, and thank you for tuning in. So at this time, the first person will be the Strategic Plan of Quinn and Associates Consultant.
Madam President, I don't see Mr. Quinn on just yet.
Okay, well, we will come back to Mr. Quinn. At this time, the 2021 option for reopening of schools, presented by Dr. McGee, interim superintendent, and Leanne Alexander, Executive Director of Special Services. North Rock Charging to Learn presentation was revised on July 30th, Pages 15. You may begin, Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Brian, do I have access to share my screen?
And Dr. McGee, interim superintendent.
Madam President, members of the board, I'm gonna present this power point that we, we're calling this as Charging to Learn. I'm gonna present this, and then we can come back and tackle some questions, and then also have the executive directors for special programs, and as well as elementary and secondary executive directors on that can give some insight. So, and first of all, let me say again, good evening, everybody. And I want to begin by thanking the central office and the building administration team, and their teams in putting their plans together. We know that we got some recent news yesterday in terms of the directives and guidance from the governor, as well as the Department of Education regarding reopening the school. So now we'll try to clarify some of those towards the end. So we're calling this Charging to Learn here. So the first thing we want is what families can expect when school reopen. We want everybody to know that, again, that the safety in, and this is slightly being updated because things change, and we got some things we want to make sure we want to cover everything. So it may be just slightly a little bit different. But what families can expect when school reopen? We want everybody to know that, to, again, the safety and the well-being of our students and staff continuing remains our top priority. And so with that being said, the first thing, we asking all parents to screen kids at home. We're recommending that parents screen them at home before they get ready to come to school. But then we also know that when they do come, that the students will be screened at school. And they'll be screened at school. We are taking temperatures, as well as making sure that everything is in place. They gotta wear a face covering. So, but anyone with a temperature of over 100 degrees will not be allowed to permit to stay at school per the Department of Health and CDC guidelines. So when the students get to school, prior to getting on the bus, and we'll go to the bus transportation here shortly, but we know that the students and the staff are required to wear face covering per the resolution that you all passed, as well as the mandate by the governor. And we certainly want to say thank you guys for passing that resolution, because that is how we're gonna minimize the spread. But we also gonna leave limited access to parents and visitor to our school campus. We know there're gonna be some parents that gotta come in, but we're gonna be screening that in each of the buildings. We have the autonomy to work with that, to make sure that we try to stay, keep the minimum access coming into our building. And then we also know that there's likely to have some arrival dismissal time's gonna be very in terms of staggering with that. So the cleaning, as we prepared the facilities, all of the HVAC, that we replace all the air filters and they clean them. And so, and then we also look at the installment of the plexiglass in the front office, as well as in the classrooms, that they have the plexiglass where teachers can't teach behind. When I visited Mr. Hatch the other day, we're running slightly behind, but we think that we can have every, all of the plexiglass completely done and install in all the classrooms in the front office way before the start of school. So our cleaning plan, we are gonna continue to follow the guidance from the CDC and the Department of Health. We're gonna make sure that daily cleaning protocol, the front entrance, restrooms, cafeteria, classroom, will be thoroughly cleaned using the disinfectant. Our staff has done a great job, Ms. Kim Martin, her staff, as well as our staff, central office, in ordering the things that they need. We know that each classroom will have a disinfectant in their room. The teacher would have it so that they can clean after every class period. And then we also invested in the Clorox 360 machines, to make sure that we can be able to expedite the cleaning, but knowing that it will still disinfect and be ready throughout the building. So with the daily procedures, we want to know that child nutrition and transportation is a big piece. So we know child nutrition, starting with them, onsite feeding. The staff will continue to wear face masks, shields, and gloves. That they're also gonna be physical distancing whenever they're possible and they're feasible. But then we also have hand sanitizing station at the entrance of each serving line, that the food items will be served by the kitchen staff, and that the all utensils and condiments and napkin will be placed on the student trays. And any kid that's participating in the virtual learning, we are going to allow parents to coordinate, to pick up meals at the designated sites. So the directors are kind of working with the principals on that. And then bus transportation, we know that kids got to ride the bus. We know we're gonna daily sanitize the bus. We know that drivers and aides will wear the mask, but we also, students gotta wear masks, but we also will provide masks for students. Right now, currently, we have over 40,000 disposable masks, and roughly anywhere from 7,500 to a 10,000 cloth masks. So, and then we will still install hand sanitizing dispensers on each of the buses, so that kids can sanitize to clean their hands on the bus, and as well as leaving off the bus. So now we're down to our options right now. We know, again, that we got some guidance from yesterday. We know that we originally had three options here. And board, I want you to know that per the guidance, that the guidance that came out from Secretary Key regarding the expectations of the records, that we are to have five days onsite instruction. However, we know that there's some concerns about that, and we know teachers and even some parents have voiced those concerns. However, the records that we've been given that in compliance and consulting with our attorneys, we do not want to go against the records and the guidance. So therefore, because it did come out, I did go ahead and pull the second option, which was the A and B. So my recommendation would be that we will go and honor the records that we have been charged of, which is the traditional with the blended learning, which would be the five days, and ready to go virtual as needed, using our Google Classroom. But the second option would be that we'll be able to promote is the virtual learning. That's 100% online. And again, our learning management system would be Google Classroom. So I know there's some concerns with that, but I would be glad to address those concerns, board members at this presentation. So one of the things that we've been charged with also is to get the teachers ready to professional development. So we know, and this presentation will be uploaded on our website. So we know here with this, the presentation with the blended learning training right here, we know that there are training that has already begun here from our office regarding the blended learning training. July the 21st, we hit a Google Classroom training. August the 10th is the next, and the records are doing this in phases. Phase one, this is phase one, they're doing it July 21st was the first training. The second training will begin on August the 10th. And then there're gonna be some additional training where the principals can ensure that all teachers and staff will have their training on the 24th, as we go forward from there. And then we're coming down what we call the reentrance and standard operating procedures for each of the buildings. And I'm gonna click on one, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but I'm gonna, all of this is in the reopening. I'm gonna kind of touch on some of the main things, because when you look in each one of these, these standard operating procedures, board, you will see the front office protocols. The front office protocol here, you'll see, again, the blended learning, but the front office protocol, you'll see the plexiglass, the hand sanitizing. You'll see the signage, we'll see, again, the face covering, the expectation regarding visitors. How are we gonna check students in? Students will be checked in and out. The parent must call the school office once they arrive on campus. School official will escort the student to or from the vehicle. This is elementary, the arrival dismissal. Each elementary will have their marked space lines to enter the building. Again, this is the protocol for arriving here. And if you click on here, it kinda, well, I can't get into it right now, but we have a protocol for arrival dismissal, and we have a protocol for late arrival for targets. Again, screening, we're still gonna continue to screen everyone. And then we're gonna continue to follow by our nurse protocol, which I'm gonna get to this towards the end, because this is how we're gonna handle cases of students and staff with COVID. So I'm gonna get into that at the end. But we also see that the questionnaire, and let me back up, board. If at the beginning of each of these plans from elementary or secondary, you'll see that the schools are listed here. You can click on the schools where they highlighted, and you can click on, and they, each school will have a more in-depth plan, because their plans have to be unique, this for each of their buildings here. We still have procedures here, again, for the transitioning. The transitioning here, and how that's gonna take place in elementary and the general procedures here, and the recess procedures as we go forth right here. And then if you click on the secondary, again, you will still have sort of the same plan that was still outlined, the expectations as we go forth here. And it's kind of pulling up a little slow, but you'll still see, again, in each one, and you see secondary, all of the plans have been uploaded, their reentry plans. So any of the parents or any of the stakeholders can click on any specific plan. The high school, for example, will have a presentation here that'll tell how this is gonna be more specific, and make sure that kids meet the needs of the kids coming back here. But it's still see the same, again, expectation, the front office protocols. How we're gonna check in our visitors here? How it's gonna be scheduled business will be strongly discouraged on campus. But also, we want you to know that there's gonna be unique, each building will be unique. Again, I pick on the high school. The high school, when they come in, they're gonna have eight, seven, or eight different entries when they'll be able to come in. They're gonna stagger times on how they're gonna transition and dismiss a going from class, but they are gonna stagger times on how to dismiss going from school on a daily basis. Again, we talked about the student checkout and check-in procedures. How the parent need to check them in or check them out on the secondary level. The parent must call the school office. Again, the blended learning piece here. The protocols, again, if we come into the COE, again, you see the different type of arrival towers where they can go in. The kids can go in from the main entrance, that's gonna be the car, from the student drivers, the A. Buses, B. Buses, C. Buses, D. And these are the towers, and then the buses, auxiliary G. So you have the different types of entries where kids can come in where it won't be, they won't be congested right there. And even with the dismissal, you'll still see the same dismissal here. So just kind of giving you an overview where we are here. And now we will go to the next one slide here. It's our Division of Special Programs, and I'm gonna, let me back up. I'm letting Ms. Leanne just gonna come, and she would talk more about our special programs. Leanne?
Good evening, President Williams and the board. I just wanted to tell you that I am so excited to be able to present to you tonight. I want to thank a few people before I get started, so you can know this just wasn't just me doing this. I want to thank my special education coordinator, Sharon Hackbart, and Leanna Askins, and my special ed MCL, Dr. Natalie McGill. They have worked tirelessly off all summer while they were off contract to help make sure that we have a great plan. And I also want to let you know that as a part of the task force, we created a subcommittee to look at special needs and 504. And I wanted to let you know all the people that were involved in that committee who gave us feedback on this plan. So I was the chair of that committee. Mr. Alan Pennington, also a member of the task force and representing our building principals. Angie Housestein, a speech-language pathologist. Stephanie Smith, occupational therapist. Dan Roach, physical therapist. Vicky Stedman, elementary special education teacher. Sandy Waymire, self-contained special education teacher. Elizabeth McMahon, middle school special education teacher. Heather Gallantyne, high school special education teacher. Susan Miller, our 504 coordinator. Michelle Dorsey, dyslexia interventionist and 504 designee. April Walker, who is a new second grade teacher, but a former 504 coordinator for Eastem. And Donley Bryant, who's the parent of special needs students. So we got input from all of these people that are on the ground, working with kids. So I wanted you guys to know that before I present that plan of all the people that I had involved. So the first thing I want to talk to you about is the students in special education who choose virtual. For elementary, we will be designating virtual teachers who will teach straight virtual. They will, for every 25 students that go virtual, we will dedicate one special education teacher. At this time, I do not know the numbers. Sorry, my dog's barking. At this time, we do not know the numbers, so I can't tell you the exact amount of teachers. We will be doing the same for speech therapists. All students will receive all the minutes as allocated by their IEP. Special education teachers will also be involved in co-teach and inclusion classes at the middle and high school level. All teachers will be making sure that all modifications and adaptations are being made that are included in the students' IEP plans. For speech and occupational and physical therapy, our speech therapists are gonna be able to provide teletherapy in most cases, but our occupational and physical therapists are gonna be reaching out to parents to do some onsite instruction, because that's manipulation of the body, and we actually need those students there face-to-face. So we're gonna be kind of working like an outpatient model for those services. For students that have one-to-one paras that have chosen the virtual, I have gotten lots and lots of calls of parents who asked me if their one-to-one para could come to their house and provide services. At this time, I want to say this publicly, we will not be sending any staff to students' homes. Our paras will be available virtually, and they can do some phone calling, and they will be there to assist. But if you choose virtual, your para-professional assistants will also be virtual. Also wanted to talk about our self-contained students. Those are our most significant needs. Those students cannot participate well virtually. However, if they chose the virtual option, their own special education self-contained teacher will be delivering their services. Will be doing packets, lots of hands-on learning, and then their teachers will be meeting with them virtually daily, either by Google Classroom or maybe by phone. So that is how we are going to address special education virtually. For onsite learning, we will be doing all services regularly for speech, OTPT, resource inclusion. We'll be doing pullouts, everything as normal as required in their IPs. For those students in self-contained classes, those students have significant needs and may not be able to wear masks or keep masks on their face. There are other students, because of their disability, they may not be able to. So we are providing additional PPE for those teachers and para-professionals. They will have masks, shields, gloves, gowns, and protective barriers. So that's because of those needs. We are also, those students will not be held to the regular discipline policy for wearing masks, but we'll do that on a case-by-case basis. So that is special ed onsite. The next thing I want to talk to y'all about is 504. Our coordinator for 504 is Susan Miller. And our 504 services are gonna mirror our special ed services as much as possible. For virtual, the designees, the 504 designees in the building, as well as the 504 coordinator, Susan Miller, will be working closely with Brooke Reynolds and the virtual teachers to ensure that all of the modifications and adaptations in their plans are being made. For all conferences, both 504 and special ed, we will still be holding conferences virtually and by phone. We want to limit the number of people coming on campus, so we are not gonna be holding those in person, but you will receive your plans by mail, and we will be reaching out to you for anything we need signatures on. So let me stop there for a minute before I go into dyslexia, and see if you guys have any questions about special education or 504. Anybody? Okay, I'm gonna move on to dyslexia intervention. And I want to let y'all know that our dyslexia specialists came up with this plan. I'm just presenting this on their behalf. That would be Gretchen McCoy, Pierce Peacock, and our newest interventionist, Amanda Powell. So the mission of our dyslexia intervention is the North Little Rock School District, in partnership with teachers, administrators, and parents, will provide students identified with characteristics of dyslexia evidence-based instruction to prepare them to be successful lifetime readers and writers. For those that opt for traditional instruction, they will receive dyslexia intervention by trained dyslexia interventionists throughout the week. Intervention can also be made available through Google Classroom and Google Meets as needed, and they will follow the DESI guidelines for dyslexia. For our students choosing virtual, a certified dyslexia interventionist teacher will report to work daily for the virtual academy. They will be in their buildings and be available for hours. The school is in session for students and parents. They will create Google Classrooms and Google Meets to meet the needs of students with characteristics of dyslexia, and services will follow the DESI guidelines for dyslexia. So, does anybody have questions for me about dyslexia?
You know, I'll always have questions about dyslexia.
And I will do my best to answer, and if I don't know, I will get the answer from you from our dyslexia specialists.
Okay, so I know that our people who are being, who were being trained last year doing the one-on-one Wilson, that all that got interrupted. So are we providing dyslexia intervention using the Wilson reading system, or are we falling back on IMSE?
We are providing intervention on the Wilson reading system. We have plans. Well, we had a plan for August 11th to do training for those teachers that didn't get it. It's been postponed. I believe it's gonna happen on the 26th, but that caught me on that, so that we can get all our teachers trained immediately, because we are gonna continue to use Wilson reading program.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, board, and thank you, Ms. Alexander, for that presentation. So I'm gonna continue on. So we want to talk about now the general safety precaution throughout the day, which is a concern. The physical barriers, we're gonna try to make sure they install when there's social distancing is not possible. But also, again, the hand sanitizing stations have been purchased, and right now, they are being installed. We do have the ones that are automatic. Some, however, not all of them arrived, because the provider was out, so they sent us to push in. But they are planning to have those automatic dispensers here around the start of school, and then they will personally come in and change them out in each of the buildings. There will be limited sharing of any supplies between students. Again, students and staff will be required to wear the face covering, and we're gonna continue to provide cloths for every student and staff, and disposable mask will be offered as well. And then we know that masks got to be worn when social distancing is not possible. And physical distancing is, and note that physical distancing can be achieved in certain times. In the face mask, we will permit them, they can be removed for a period of time. So let's talk about if there's a suspected case protocol. If we have, and we have to be honest, when this takes place, we have a procedure here. If an employee or student that has symptoms of COVID-19, and they should first seek medical attention in the health order as soon as possible. You see the symptoms are right here, that's listed, a fever 100% above, cough, shortness of breath, loss of taste, or pneumonia. This is what the building nurse would do. She would assess the patient. She would have to isolate the possible patient. And every school building that we have, have a designated isolated room. So we have already designated that room and already got it closed to the nurse, so that we can make sure that we have that room close by, so that the nurse can put them in. And of course, the nurse will have the additional PPE, not just the face shield, not only the face shield, the mask, but the cloth. She will also, he or she will also have just the gowns and additional PPE to make sure that she is safe. Then the nurse will continue to, will look to arrange for dismissal, urge the COVID testing document on the district COVID-19 tracking form, notify the building principal or the employee supervisor, notify the custodial staff so that they can properly disinfect the contaminated area. And then, of course, we have to contact Arcs, our Department of Health hotline. And that will be done by our point of contact. And that point of contact would be one that would kind of help facilitate and contact and make all the calls to the hotline. Then the employee or the student would stay at home from work or school, get tested, follow the guidelines from the Department of Health, notify the nurse of those directors and the test result. Then he or she can return to the school setting when it's approved to do so. If an employee or student tests positive, then they must follow the records given to them by the Department of Health supervisor, and the nurse, they would make sure they notify them as well. And then just kind of make a record contact of who they've been kind of exposed to. Then, of course, the reentry of the school and its work set, school or the work setting. So now, we know that the State Department has gave us some guidance. They call it what they call the response levels for onsite learning. So the different response level here. If you see a confirmed case, then the next step, there's two next steps. The one, we have to determine the level of response based on the guidance and the community spread. That could be what you call a limited, moderate, or critical. And then, two, the district point of contact would then call the hotline, and then this person would notify, would kind of do the investigating, so that they can do the contact tracing. And also, we would identify the person or the persons, what they call probable close contact. So if we say a probable close contact, then that means that person would have to be quarantined. So if it's a limited response right here, there's some of the things that we can do right here. It just depends, Arcs or Department of Health will give us guidance on here. Reinforce the hands, hand hygiene, enforce social distancing, intensify the cleaning disinfect, and even postpone non-critical gatherings and events. If it's a moderate here, this may require the building dismissal consult, again, with the State Department of Health and ADE for the guidance. But then this could be somewhere where we initiate the approved blended learning model for the effective location. So that is something that there's some questions, and all of this, we're gonna have a lot of questions. It's gonna be on a case-by-case basis. One of the questions for this, would that model, that blended learning model be for that classroom? Or would it be for the whole school? If it's just a moderate response level. But if it is a critical response level, then the extended period of the building dismissal, the district closure would be determined in conjunction with the ADE and Arcs or Department of Health. And this is where we will have to coordinate with the Department of Health and for the guidance. I need parents who are watching, I need the board members to understand, I need all the staff to understand. We have met yesterday, again, trying to work out some of these details, because this could look like, this potential critical response could look like at a 7 o'clock in the evening, if we get a phone call that so-and-so has been a probable contact, and we may have to close the school down. And because he or she could have potentially exposed quite a few students or staff. So this is something that is gonna be, it's just gonna have to be very fluid, and we gotta be very critical and communicate very effectively. So we have put together a team, and also the Department of Health and ADE said that we must have what we call a district point of contact. And we have now only put together a point of contact, and we're gonna bring back to you, board, because we do have to pay this person. This person's job duty is gonna extend past the wee hours of a workday. So we can afford to pay them a stipend out of the CARES Act. But we're also gonna look to give them a committee as well, because this is gonna require a lot of work. So this is the flow chart that we will use to kind of communicate with our public and all of our stakeholders. Again, if we receive notification of a student employee, we gotta quarantine them immediately and wait test results. At the same time, if anyone has signs or symptoms at the school, isolate them with appropriate PPE, call the parent, and provide the COVID. parent, and provide the COVID. Well, we won't provide a COVID testing, but we would encourage them to go get their COVID testing in the local area. Clean and disinfect, follow up with school nurse. After their quarantine, again, the guidance from the ADE will look at us. If it is a positive case right here, then we will call the hotline. If it's a negative case right here, then right here, we will go decide. If there's no signs and symptoms right here, fever-free, then they can be for 48 hours before returning to school. If there's no signs or symptoms, and it's close contact, then they are no close contact, and again, they may return to school. But if there's no signs or symptoms, but close contact to a positive case, then they gotta spend quarantine for 14 days. And then, right here, after we call the hotline here, then the district would compile a list of probable close contacts, notify, again, the Department of Health will kinda give us some guidance on there, and then we would send out the proper communication. Let me stop right here on just this, with the suspected case protocol, to see if there are any questions right here before I move on. Okay, thank you. And then, some of the additional things on campus and in the classroom, again, six feet, urging the six feet, which is the requirements, keeping students in a smaller group, serve meals in a smaller group, and again, when feasible, space the desks inside the classrooms, again, inside the school. I'm trying to stagger lunches, recesses, and the transition time. And also, we will not host any type of large gatherings such as assemblies or dance. Then, we've already, again, isolated that sick room right there. Now, we do have a support, I mean, a technology plan, because we know that we gotta be ready to go to virtual at any given time. And I wanna commend Mr. Staggers and his staff on what they've done with this technology plan, and all of our, again, all of our administrators who put this plan together. Right now, we're gonna have, currently, we have outdoor Wi-Fi for every school, as we speak. But we also have a local partnership with a hub that will help us to, and we also work, again, we have already some commitments from churches that we're gonna have in event that those families are in need. But we also now, with the announcement of the $10 million from the governor, we are able to get 250 hotspots, and we were able to invest in 200 additional 50 hotspots. So there's more than enough hotspots that we will have to service each of the kids who need one. One hotspot can service five, one household, and it can up to five devices on those hotspots. But we also, and I'm proud to announce that, and I wanna, again, thank Mr. Staggers, we're gonna have a help desk. It's gonna be very imperative that we provide that support to our stakeholders, our parents, our teachers, our students, with this technology and the hotspots. So we have a help desk that'll be ready to go, and hopefully, we can have it ready to roll out by August 24th. That's gonna be, the number there is 501-252-1004. And that's gonna be, again, Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. This is, again, again, parents and board members, again, this is in a attempt to make sure that we can provide that support to our teachers and students and parents regarding the hotspots with the technology. And then, we know, Board members, that we got to provide the support to our students and our teachers and staff as well. We know there are concerns. We know this. We have students who wanna get back to this routine. Since March the 12th, we've been out. We have invested in numerous middle health agencies that will be ready to go to provide the support on-site for different, various campuses. We know that the student-teacher relationship has gotta be powerful. We know the social and emotional learning. We look at the support that AD is providing us with that. And again, and then we wanna make sure we make everybody aware of those triggers for those students. But we also know that for our staff, that we wanna provide support to them. We have invested in on-site psychologists that will help provide the support to their staff to ensure on how to make sure that we can teach in this COVID-19 period. We know there are eight sessions with the insurance that are counseling free. And then, we know with the recent announcement from the governor just the other day about Arcsar Activity Association, that he is making announcements that move forward with fall sports. So with that, but also with the band, the new director that just came out yesterday about the director for the community and school sponsoring music and return to play. This is maintaining the physical distance within six feet. The musician, directors, and staff must be screened prior to any activity, face covering, completely cover the nose and the mouth. Those who are playing the instrument, they will got to have a split inside their face covering to play. And then, there are additional directors and support enlisted here for support that you can read on your own here. But we know, too, there's some clarification that got to take place with this, and we was just told today that the ADE is hoping to release another commission memo with some more additional clarification in regards to the music, to the band, and to the choir as we move forward. Board member, that is the last of my slide there, so I wanna say thank you. But as always, as we continue to work and move our district forward, we want everybody to know this is really, this is us. We are united to try to do what we can, do what's best for student success in educating our students. So let me stop talking to see if there are questions that I can potentially address and answer.
Madam President, I do have a quick question. I don't know what she's saying, so I'm hoping that she says I can talk. Okay.
Okay, what I would like to do, we're gonna, everybody have questions, and in case, we're going to listen attentively directives to Dr. McGee, and please answer according to the way the state has told you to.
Correct.
And because there are concerns. And so with that, we will start with Ms. Campbell. State did a good job, Dr. McGee, answering those questions. That's from Ms. Campbell, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Huggins, your questions?
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Will you just explain to the general public, because you and I had conversations about this yesterday, why it is that we can't do the A and B days? Because I think there's still a lot of confusion out there about that.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Huggins. Yes, the state, when we petitioned, as you guys remember, I petitioned the state for guidance about three weeks ago, when they indicated these guidance here. Secretary Kee, part of his guidance said that we must provide the five days, then we can do additional options. One of the options, he said that you can do guidance, or you can do a four-day based off of law, but then, that option, that fifth day, if parents need services, or they decide they want their kids at school, then you got to provide those services. This is all based on the Lakeview case. And then, he came back and indicated that even if we wanted to do the three-day, or two, or three-day, if parents indicate that they want their kids there, then we are obligated to provide the services. That is exactly what was stated to me yesterday morning, and that was exactly stated to me again just today on three different occasions by phone calls from our board that we participate, the co-op, as well as from the state. We know that there are other districts doing some things. I can't answer what other districts are doing. I just know that what we were told and what we directed. I did consult with our attorneys. Our attorneys indicated that we need to follow the guidance per the governor and Secretary Kee, and that we do not wanna go against. And he advised that, because there are consequences. And if you watched the press conference on yesterday, the governor said if the district didn't have the option, that there will be consequences, what he indicated. So that's where we are. I know that there are concerns, and my heart goes out to everyone. Again, the same thing, we're trying to do our best. I'm confident in the central office staff, I'm confident even in the building staff, that we're gonna do everything we can do to ensure everybody's safe and secure. We order every staff will have a face shield, and a face mask, because they indicated there's gonna be two different layers of protection that they can have while they're teaching and walking the halls. We're gonna do everything. I mean, we just gonna, my heart just goes out to everyone.
Okay, Ms. Huggins. Okay, your question was answered. At this time, Dr. Reddick.
Thank you, Madam President. And you just answered the question that I was gonna ask. I was gonna ask about the shields, whether or not that was gonna be an option, because we talked about the mask, whether or not each staff would get a shield as well. And that's correct, that they will?
Yeah. Every, we bought 1,500 shields. Now, we're still waiting on some of the end, and we're starting to getting stuff in as we speak. So Ms. Stuckey, who's our leader and that is not here today, but I will follow up with tomorrow, and I will be a part of my communication with you guys where we are. And we also, as a listener, the state for additional PPE equipment if we need it as well.
That was gonna be my question, and then I was just gonna make the statement is, thank you to everybody that has worked on this. I can't even begin to imagine. And you've done a wonderful job, and thank you.
Okay, Mr. Steele.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. McGee, and maybe I didn't hear you correctly, but are the temperatures of the kids gonna be taken when the kids get on the bus?
No, they will be taken when they get coming into the school, because it was said that the Department of Health said the best way to take the temperature, they gotta be behind one door. If, you can recall, we're piloting that now with our football program. Football kids come inside a door first and take their temperature, so we can have a better read. So taking it on the bus, it would kinda do, it would create some serious delays as we're trying to make sure that we are timely. But we will have, we have ordered, I guess, maybe 50 or so tablets and cameras that would take the body temperature, as well as about maybe 70 handheld electric thermometers that were taken, that would be given to all the schools, so that they can take a group piloting the temperature, as well as they can do a handheld. And we do have a protocol that we won't violate any one HIPAA rights. So if Keith McGee comes in and that camera picks up a red, then he will be strategically sent to the nurse to be screened again before going any further. And that would be proper communication throughout the building that morning. And that's why we have, for example, and I'll go to the next question, that's why we have, at the high schools specifically, we have about seven or eight entries. So the entries is so that we can be able to do that with the fidelity and make sure that we can get properly screened everyone.
Yes, so just one quick follow-up. As far as the school's academic performance and the grades, are any allowances, if you talk to the Department of Education, any allowance is gonna be made? You know, schools like Seventh Street that ended the year, at least in March, was doing a good job, any allowance is gonna be made because the pandemic hit, and now, you know, some of that progress they made may not be recognized?
Well, I will say this. We're gonna, I'm gonna say two things. Number one, we did send in a training that we're gonna go back, and we have a very good plan to revisit those standards, essential standards that kids have missed during when we get out. So that is the directors work that into their plan to make sure that is gonna take place with those kids. But then, also, I'm sure that we're gonna be, opportunity to voice our concerns regarding the state assessment and what we expect with that, because I don't think, I mean, I just know that that'll be forthcoming that we mention as we go from there.
Thank you for your leadership, and thank you, Madam President.
Okay, Ms. Temple.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanna make sure I understand a couple of things. The first is the five days a week, that's gonna be blended learning, because at any time, they could have to go to virtual, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So at one point, we were talking about the arrival and departure times being changed for the bus schedule. I think we tabled that?
We did. We did table that, because we was trying to finalize where we was gonna, how we was gonna open. Mr. Tyler and Mr. Stone, I have been speaking of that. I asked them to wait until we narrowed down how we're gonna open and make the decision, go from there.
Okay, so we revisit that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. And then, the virtual option, that's gonna be kind of a strict schedule, is it not?
Correct.
I mean, you got to be in that classroom when it's...
The virtual, the way that we currently have it set up, and we're trying to work out some more details, because we have quite a few elementary kids, and Ms. Smith and I were both having a conversation this morning about that along with Kathy Hill. We have quite a few elementary kids, so we can't staff to properly do that. So we have another creative way to make sure that every kid in the elementary can still have virtual with the same teacher. So, and then secondary, we'll be able to do that, we'll be fine with secondary, but it will be a schedule. It will not be like we did when we went out in March, that like a AMI, just do the work. No, it would be a schedule, so that the teacher can take their attendance. They gotta log in per the commission memo regarding if they're be counted absent. They gotta be able to log in like a Zoom face-to-face, just like we are here. The teacher gotta be able to see that.
Okay. Well, I'm just wondering how are we gonna help a parent who said they have three kids at home, one has a dentist appointment, so they gotta take all the kids with them to the dentist appointment? And I mean, what have we gotta do?
That's a very good question, Ms. Temple. That is something that we would need to give back with you, and that's probably gonna be on a case-by-case basis. We'll have to just work with the parents on it. But that's something that we, my team and I, we can, along with the building principal, can work out.
Okay. All right. So then, I wanna fast forward. We know we have about 3,000 that have signed up for virtual already?
Yeah, it's roughly, when I look at the numbers today, 30, it might have been 3364, 3,364 kids. Now, Dr. Reynolds is doing a good job going back in and cleaning up, making sure there's no duplicates of those that sign up, so that we can make sure we get an accurate account. We are asking that that survey be enrolling in the virtual closed tomorrow by noon, so that we can continue to move forward with the planning.
Okay, so if that's the case, then that leaves about 60% of the student body that would need to be in the classroom?
I hadn't done the math, but I think it's gonna be more closer to right around 50. I hadn't done the math, but I think it's gonna be close to 50%. It could be half, it's gonna be virtual, and half would be on-site.
Okay, so I guess, I'm just trying in my mind to, I guess I was thinking when we were gonna do the AB, that was gonna kinda divide the student body, but the virtual is kinda dividing it already. So have we figured out how many kids would be in the class?
Well, I can tell you this. We have looked at, and I'm gonna say from elementary and secondary, and I'm gonna pick on just the high school. Right now, when I look at the numbers for high school, I think they have currently right around 700. COE has almost 200. So you're talking about 900 kids. And again, I'm just gonna give around figure. We're talking about 2,300 kids from there. So you subtract 900 from 23, that's gonna be 1,400. So now, one of the things that we gotta continue to be is to be, and I wanna say that all of these buildings have been very creative, and I appreciate them, their hard work, and their leadership team, because they've been very creative, how to spread out, how to transition in, how to transition from class, from staggering that, to even with the lunches. So we think that we have a possible chance to continue social and physical distance within the classroom. We just have to wait and get the final count of the numbers, and then I can give the board an update where we are.
Okay. And then, I heard what you said about where we stand with the governor and the mandate, but is there, when I read the instructions, it said that we had to provide an option for a full week, and that we could offer virtual options. And I don't wanna stir up any trouble with the state, but do we have any options that you feel like we have any options for the first week or two of school to come in slowly, or do you think we just have to open the door and everybody come in?
To be honest, which of my recommendations is that we proceed as we've been guided to do, which we just transitioned with five days. That would be my recommendation. I would look at it again, but that's where I would stand, because I just think right now, currently, we just don't have the infrastructure, how to be able to do some of the things that other districts are doing. And that doesn't mean we can't get there, but we just gotta be strategic. So we just gotta be patient with that, and I will, again, look at that with my team.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for, everybody for what they've done.
Okay. At this time, Ms. Walkum. Mrs. Walkum.
I have lots of questions. Just out of curiosity, what happens to us if we tell the governor, no, thank you, we choose safety first? What are the consequences? I mean, are they heavy enough for us to go, you know what, it's worth it?
Let me give you what our attorney said, that the governor has the ability to... Let me give you what our attorney said, that the governor has the ability to uh sanction the district uh withhold the funding, uh the accreditation could be in status and potentially possibly uh remove the board.
Okay, so with that being said, also, because you've mentioned funding, we all know our situation. Are we financially fiscal fiscal to tell the governor, no, thank you, you can keep your pennies?
I I don't think we are, to be honest with you, because we depend solely on the uh part of that funding. Yeah, you know, the state has been doing an excellent job working with North Little Rock School District for years. And I it it would be my recommendation that we continue that good working partner relationship. Uh Secretary Key and and Doctor Fetter was very open to my suggestion when I've kinda met with them.
Okay, so what about we open the doors, say we come back five days face to face? Do we have enough cleaning supplies on hand in order to clean for the next, say, four weeks?
Per my understanding, we do, we do. We we have enough cleaning and the state and I'm gonna fill out another P P E request form tomorrow when Ms. Ducky get back with her collaboration so that we can even order further and more cleaning supplies that the state can get on hand.
Okay, so we talked about scattering the class times for dismissal within the schools. What about the bus schedule? So we'll come back to that, we'll finish that up after the board meeting, then later, just depending on what we decide on then?
Yeah, we're open to that, Ms. Uh Walkum. I I'm I'm open, we can come back to it. I will get with Mister Tyler tomorrow along with Mister Stone and we'd be ready to present something to the board at the regular board meeting if you like.
Okay, so consequences for parents, what are the consequences gonna be if parents give their children Tylenol and Advil, put them on that bus and they come through and we don't catch them until, say, twelve-thirty? And then we've already infected twenty-five plus people. I mean, hopefully, the the parents knew some consequences for that.
That's a very good point and that is a question that I did ask and I will follow up. I did also in collaboration with uh our city, uh it's gonna be very imperative that our parents, when the school, when the schools call them, they must answer the phone. If the school say that you got to come get your kid, I need parents to cooperate, come get their kid immediately. Uh we've been instructed to call D H S, we've been called uh 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 the local police to help with that. This is a public health issue and concern. So uh I will stay with that. I would tell you that I met with our chief that said that when we reach out to you and we need you to go by our address to get a parent or a job, we need that cooperation. The city of North Little Rock Police Chief Ralston said that he fully support and he will be at our at our disposal.
Okay, great, thank you. So again, hypothetical, we open the doors for five days, we're face to face. In the event that this happens, will we have teachers or staff aides to help get the children from point A to point B? So we don't linger in the hallways, play in the water in the in the bathroom?
Very good point, Ms. Walkum, and I'll charge that with the directors uh to make sure and work with the building principal that do occur. I am going to uh direct a Mister Williams to point to reassign some of the campus supervisor at the more uh bigger, larger schools so that we can expedite to get kids in and out. So we're gonna have to have those uh people that's gonna float, so that's very good point, yes. And I'm also gonna reassign our central office staff in the mornings to a building to help out so that we can be visible to helping out each of the buildings as well.
Awesome, love that. Great job on that, thank you. Okay, last question then, I'll wrap it up. Hypothetically again, devil's advocate here, what happens if we do kindergarten through fifth grade face to face and we did sixth grade to twelfth grade virtual for the first nine weeks? Hang on, with the exception of our sped kids, our five oh four dyslexia, those even staff children, what happens if we send those face to face for five days? Is that even possible without the governor or anyone else coming in and slapping our hand?
I I I wouldn't recommend it. I would recommend that we stay within compliance. I'm gonna be honest with you is I I would really love to do with it another option. I I just think at this point, we need to get past and move forward. Schools are doing a great job getting ready to plan. I wouldn't recommend doing anything like that because we need that support from the state and the government and I don't wanna be slapped and I don't want this district to be slapped. This district is very, very important to me and I'm very passionate about this district. I love this district and unfortunately, we just in a pandemic and uh we just have to work together to ensure the safety of all people, uh all of our students and staff. Uh so that's where I am unless something changes. And let me say this, board members and to all of our parents and stakeholders who 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 watching, things are changing daily. I don't, I can't, I can't reemphasize that more. I know that people think that it's us, it's not us. Things are changing daily. We get the same guy that you get and and when we, when I give it to you, that mean I just got him. Uh so I I don't know, uh and and there's no superintendent in this district. What do they got, thirty years or first year? Everybody is novice in this. We're all talking to each other. We're all frustrated. We're all ready. We 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 just want, you know, we're gonna do our best to ensure that we can have a safe, effective, productive school year and that's where I am with that. I I'm ready to get schools started back. I am confident in the teachers, confident in the administration that we can educate our children at a high level even during this pandemic.
Okay, I think I'm finished. I don't know.
Okay, uh I'm the last person, uh Dr. McGee. And I've heard everybody talking about in the building, but I would like to piggyback on what Mr. Steele had formally said because I gotten calls from bus drivers. And the thing that gets me most, you're talking about in the building. But if kids got to get on the bus, these are the first people that they see. That this to me would be where they would have their temperatures checked expeditiously. And then we, the bus drivers have a roster of every child that gets on their point, so they can call the parent. Why would we wait till they get to school to check the temp? And then you're setting off a whole new, taking away workers doing things that they could be doing something else, but they got to go and monitor students in case they have this. So I thought about social distance on the bus. Have they looked at that? This is what the bus drivers asked me. I'm asking you to answer all three of these questions.
Uh yes.
Just a moment. Parent contact information for every student on the bus and the reason I'm saying this clarity. If I got my child out there on the bus line, I put him on the bus, he may have a fever, a temp. I'm gonna send him to school and then if there is an issue, got to call somebody. When to me, I what I'm asking you to do, Dr. McGee, look through this because the first person that pick up those kids is the bus driver. And if you can think of, you all can work together with the department and see what can be done. I don't wanna hear about, we don't have the money, but to me, the first thing they need to have is that temp checked. And as a parent, I would be afraid for my child to get on the bus if there has nothing been done prior. But I'm just looking at the long term of what we can do. And when you and your staff look at it, but my concern is, goes back to Mr. Steele. I think you should be checked before you get on that bus. That's my concern.
Right, se- several things, Miss Williams on that. Uh number one, if we check the temperature, it will not give a accurate reading outside. That's why they do not recommend that you check the temperatures outside. They recommend you step inside. And it would change daily as the as the temperature changing outside, it would change their student body temperature. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that we cannot leave a kid at a stop outside on on it by itself. We would be held liable like that. It would be easier uh and and I understand the concern about the social distancing this is the on the bus, the physical distancing on the bus. If we did the physical distancing on the bus, we would only get about fifteen kids per bus, fifteen kids per bus. I will tell you that I am, I've directed Michael Stone, I've been in contact with uh Rock Region Metro Transportation and trying to work out a partnership with them about transporting our kids as well. Uh but we're trying to cross to make sure that their stop will be aligned with our stop so that we can have another form of bus communication in transporting kids. Uh and uh that was brought to my attention by a parent. I wanna thank the parent that did it. And we have been in contact with Mister Frazier with Rock Region. And I'm gonna get with Michael Stone to make sure that if the bus stops lining up, then that is something that we can provide to have and and hire them to help transport kids to buses, which will help decrease the number of students to ride the bus. So uh that would be my answer to that, but we will be willing to check on it again. Uh again, we will, we order special P P E equipment for bus drivers as well, not only the face shield, not only the uh the mask, we can order some gowns if we need to, we they gonna have gloves and it will have hand sanitizer stations on that bus when kids get on as well. So I we would do whatever that you guys asked us to do and and we would do everything we can to ensure that these kids are safe. But we will set ourselves up for liability if we leave a kid at a bus stop because they may have a allegedly have a fever and it could be already eighty degrees outside early in the morning.
Excuse me, Dr. McGee, you missed the point there. I heard what you said on that. It wasn't about leaving a child at the bus stop. It was about if the bus drivers had a roster with the contact number, they could call the parent. And then you made the statement about uh in that I'd asked you this question earlier. You said, well, it would take the bus drivers too long to get to the building. This is pandemic. I wouldn't care how long it took them as long as they were tested. That's my attitude on that because people have to understand pandemic, we it's a different scenario. And my concern is for every child, every bus driver, every everybody, that everybody is taken care of because it's scary. And I'm just saying to you that to look into that just a little bit.
We we will look.
What can be done, okay?
We will look.
Your presentation was excellent and I appreciate that. But the only thing I have concerned about, and please understand me, that first initial contact getting on the bus and I don't know how we'll solve that, but you can fix it. You'll tell us that about that, okay? And thank you.
We will look at that and and we'll make sure we get every bus driver roster.
Okay, Ms. Walkum.
How many buses are we planning on running? Are we, are we going to run the full fleet that we have? Do we have any additional? I know you spoke about the Rock Metro or Metro Rock. Do, are we running how many buses and are we full standard? Even with us having three thousand going virtual, will that allow us to show social distance on the buses that we are running?
Well, we we just, despite that, we lost five bus drivers and potentially lost one more, so we down six bus drivers. Uh we we kinda met with uh we we met with Leanne about trying to work on something else with sped that would maybe potentially get outsourced uh special aid transportation. Uh we trying to work on those details that would relieve those drivers so that we can come back and have those bus drivers to transport the bigger kids, the big fleet. So we just gotta, we we it's gonna be, we just gotta keep working, we're gonna keep brainstorming, uh storming with this and hopefully, if I can, if we can solidify this partnership with Rock Region uh Metro and tie those stops into our bus stop, that would, I'm confident that would help alleviate some uh uh bus transportation and we can be able to social distance. Rock Region Metro has already indicated they do social and physical distance on their bus. So that is something that we can just gotta keep working and try to get back with the board on.
Okay, were there other questions?
Can I ask a follow up question, please?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. Back to the buses, um i- if we use Rock Region, does that not uh bring in liability concerns? Like, we have to ensure that our kids are gonna be safe on those buses and we don't know who's riding the bus.
That that is something that petitioned our attorney with as well. So our attorney is gonna, I'm gonna be busy with Jay on that as well tomorrow. We just trying to, we just trying to be strategic. I know there are other districts that have partnered with Rock Region as well.
Okay, Dr. Reddits?
Uh yes, I was trying to see if I was still on mute. Real, uh two quick questions, Dr. McGee. The first one is, we always talk about K through twelve and we never say anything about pre-K. Are they on a different, what are we doing? Cause we know three, three and four year olds ain't keeping on no mask and they ain't staying six feet apart.
Pre-K is different because we have to, uh you know, that's that's by different funding source. They have to be at school and we could lose that grant. We're talking about a three million grant, a three million dollar grant to fund that program. So uh they are on a whole different regulations by from the state.
So as far as, you know, wearing mask, their their rules is different than what you've outlined?
Well, we can still encourage them to wear masks now. We wanna continue to say that we want to encourage them to wear the mask. Uh what we're gonna continue to do as well is that I asked Ms. Ducky to put out another video on kinda educating everybody where we are with COVID and what the importance of wearing a mask and how to wear the mask that would help kinda educate everyone on on that. So but yeah, we're gonna strongly encourage all pre-K to wear the mask.
Okay, and lastly, um schools, well, I I can only talk about the school that I know about, like Boom Park. Um a lot of the classes have plus students in the class.
Say it again, say that again.
A lot of those, it uh I have to use Boom Park as an example, a lot of the classes, they are already overpopulated, I guess you could say. They may have twenty-five plus to a class. How are we gonna social distance?
Well, if the numbers, again, we have to look at the numbers of virtual. That's where we're gonna come. Uh that would be more detail. We can have a more detailed report tomorrow when it close because we will know how many kids per building has gone going virtual. Uh again, we know right now roughly right around. In fact, I just got a text from this Dr. Reynolds. She says thirty-seven hundred kids. So that's up from what I just saw earlier, when it was this thirty-three. So we're talking about thirty-seven hundred kids, so it may, it just gotta play the numbers. It's a numbers game and we'll break it down and disaggregate the numbers per building so that we'll know how that's gonna work. Uh so that's something we.
So in other words, if you normally, before COVID, if you normally had two second grade teachers and they each had twenty-eight in a class, well, now that we're virtual and in class, is the possibility that you could split and they wouldn't have as many in a class?
They won't have as many, correct.
Got you.
Yeah, it it it's a possibility probably we have, if you normally have twenty, it's possible you may not have now of like twelve. We just have to see the numbers. It it it's gonna be the numbers game.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh with the, oh, number concern, Dr. McGee, I don't know how many board members been to buildings. Uh Mister Hatch did an excellent job about putting up the barriers in the offices. One problem, Dr. McGee, they were not saying in splinters. A child, a parent can easily get a splinter, a splinter, a splinter in their hand and I would like to see that corrected.
Yeah, we'll, I'll make sure. I've I've already got a meeting with Mister Hatch in the morning on that, make sure that we cover. And if you see anything else, we will. One last thing that uh we do wanna present to the board is that Miss Smith is gonna come, Laurie Smith is gonna come with a slight proposal on uh the kindergarten. Uh so I I I want her to come.
Alright.
Before we do that, Madam President, any further questions for me? I know I've given you guys a lot and I I do understand, so uh I I know that there are concerns and that and and again, I'm not trying to make up any excuse or anything. I just giving you everything that we've got. My team and the central office team, building team, I they they work very hard and we know that they're uncertain. As a parent myself, I'm right there with everyone else, so I understand. I I really do.
Okay, uh Ms. Smith, Mrs. Smith?
I think Ms. Walkum had one question for me, Madam President.
Okay, I'm sorry.
One more question, I apologize. Tell me about the A C units. I know what's going on in Crestwood. We spoke about that already as far as last meeting, I think. Can't, uh it seems like Metro's doing a really good job. I know we've got some A C units out throughout the district. How's that looking again if we start school? Are we okay?
Uh I'm not aware of any other A C units out. Uh with with regards to uh Crestwood, Mister Hatch indicated to me today that we are on track to be ready by the time we start school.
Okay, and what about our teachers? Are they gonna have an opportunity to get back in before students arrive?
I I would have a more thorough, a thorough detail on timeline, but uh I would have intended, I would hope they will. Per my last conversation with Metro. Per my last conversation with Metro, they were gonna try to wrap that up the week before we start school. But I just need to get back with you on that, make sure.
Okay, thank you.
I heard you.
Academy?
Academy is, is gonna be on track. The, uh, we're just waiting on the towels to come in. It's already been abated. So we wait on the towels to come in for the cafeteria and the B S R.
Okay, Ms. Temple?
Is that, on the virtual school, did that, did the parents who are trying to elect by tomorrow noon, do they have their, um, electives, advanced classes and, and what they're gonna be taking if they're virtual?
Yeah, I think Dr. Reynolds has, and, and the executive directors have a list of electives that's gonna be offered virtually.
So how is the parent supposed to find out?
I'm assuming that they're working with a building counselor.
Miss Walkum? Cindy, that gives the counselors like ten days or less, plus working Saturday and Sunday. I mean, it's crunch time. It's definitely crunch time. If you know what, lunch or dinner for any and all of our counselors, please feel free. Bless their heart, they're stressed.
Ms. Temple, will you?
Well, I just said, where parents are trying to make a decision and if they can't get some of the classes they want virtually, they may decide they want to go five day and I, and, and we're giving them a deadline, so I'm just, um, trying to figure out how we're gonna work that out for them.
Okay, and Dr. McGee, he will always inform us and he feels he need to make a, call us for a special board meeting. It's no problem, okay, Dr. McGee?
Yeah, correct.
All right, at this time, Mrs. Smith, would you please come in?
Hi there, yes. Good morning, I mean, good, good morning. Good evening, Madam President. That's kind of the day it's been, right? Um, I do kind of want to share with you, um, a plan that we are, um, gonna put in place hopefully for our kindergarten students. And this kind of speaks to Ms. Walkum's, um, idea or question about kind of phasing in. Um, in the past, what has happened is the kindergarten students come to school the first day and the first week, then they have a series of assessments and screening kinds of things, kind of get to know, um, the teachers. And then the teachers at that point after that first week, um, kind of sort those kids into their classrooms. Um, and it has, it's, it's worked very, very well. Um, however, with the current circumstances, um, we feel like kind of a phasing in approach might be better for our littlest scholars. And so, um, what we would like to do is, um, assessments for those students will be planned Monday through Wednesday. So that would be the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, um, and a half a day on Wednesday, the, uh, twenty-sixth. And then, uh, what would happen is schools would contact their incoming kindergarten parents and they would set up an appointment for their students to come into the building. And they would be greeted by, um, a, a, you know, a staff member. And then they would go and do their one-on-one screening with that student, um, and then take them back to their parent and then they would leave. Um, and then that way, uh, all students could have kind of a private screening, a time with the teacher. Um, and then the assessments then Wednesday afternoon, the kindergarten teachers in each building would get together and kind of sort classes, um, so that they're all equitable and even across the board. And then we are, um, asking the kindergarten teachers on Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, at three o'clock, we ask those kindergarten teachers to host a virtual open house for the students and the parents. Um, and then, um, each school is planning a very warm welcome to, um, welcome their kindergartners to their first day of school, which would be Thursday, August twenty-seventh at nine o'clock in the morning. So we can get the morning, um, started and kind of get everybody settled down. And then our incoming kindergartners would come when there's less stress. Um, and again, those, those teachers and staff members would meet those parents, reassure them that their little ones are gonna be just fine. Um, and then to take them, that at that point, the parent would also know, um, the child's teacher. Um, and, and I think that's gonna make our parents feel a little bit better about, um, all of this potential chaos on the first day. Um, there is, uh, there are a few other districts that are doing this. I have asked principals and their teams to, um, plan for scenarios such as parents that don't get the information and show up on the first day of school. You know, what are we gonna do with those students? Um, what are we gonna do with students that don't have transportation? Um, and so they have brainstormed at the building level, um, some things that they might be able to do. Bottom line is, if, if students obviously show up, um, on the first day, we are going to make accommodations, um, for those students and get the, the screening done. Um, and then if they come on Thursday and they haven't been screened, then each school will have a team that then can screen, can screen them, um, quickly and get those students placed in the classroom. So I feel like this is very, um, developmentally appropriate. I think since we didn't have, we weren't able to have kindergarten roundup last year, I think this will ease our parents' minds a little bit, um, and know that, um, they're gonna have some special treatment. Um, and we're really gonna get to know their students, um, before we just, you know, they have to either send them on a bus or, or drop them off at school. So, um, just know that that's our plan and I'm happy to answer any questions, um, that you may have on that.
Okay, uh, Ms. Campbell? Okay, uh, Ms. Huggins?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, uh, Ms. Reddits?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Steele? Mr. Steele, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Ms. Temple?
No questions, but good job taking care of those babies.
Okay, Ms. Walkum?
No questions, but I do have a piggyback. Dr. McGee, is that something that we can do for our on, our incoming sixth graders? Our new students to the district, if we have any, possibly the ninth graders for the high school as well?
Did charge the directors to kind of work on a plan with that. I think they already have a plan, Ms. Walkum, uh, and they can share their, their, their plan with that. Uh, but I also, when, when this is over, I got, Madam President, I have one comment regarding Ms. Temple's question about the electives. I want to come back to that for a brief moment.
Okay, um, Ms. Smith, thank you for thinking outside of the box. Very good. Okay, Dr. McGee, what did you want your last?
All of us, our, our director for virtual learning has already, uh, uh, reminded me that we did email the parents about the electives that's gonna be offered virtually. All of the parents were, are aware the electives going forward. And there're gonna be so many electives that we're gonna have to accommodate such as band, uh, that we can work out or work on, uh, once we get further guidance, more guidance on that as well. So, Dr. Reynolds did remind me of that and she is also on the call if you have any questions regarding the electives.
Yeah, I guess.
Go ahead, Cindy.
I was just gonna say, I, I guess not all the parents, if they didn't sign up, did they get that, ask that information if they were, haven't made their decision yet? Or only if they made their decision?
That's a very good question. Dr. Reynolds, can you come on and answer that question? I'm not sure.
Sure, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I'm here.
Can you hear me? Okay. Uh, at this point, only the people that have signed up for virtual were notified if an elective was not gonna be available virtually. Uh, with that information is also out on our virtual webpage. So if they're curious about a specific elective and it's very, very few, um, they can check on the webpage or if they want to just, uh, with their guidance counselor and just check if they have, there's one I want to make sure my child gets in. And what, and they could check with their guidance counselors as well and, and find that information.
Okay.
So did I hear you correctly, Ms. Dr. Reynolds, that you already have the electives posted somewhere then for the virtuals?
Right, it's, well, like I said, Ms. Walkum, there's very, very few that, that we're not gonna be able to offer and I have a feeling because of the numbers growing, that may not even be as much the case. But there's a couple of things that, that are hands-on and, and are not gonna be able to do virtual. Uh, but yet we, we discussed that and then we've, we've got it posted as well. But again, if they, uh, want to, they can also just check with their guidance counselors and they can let them know immediately if that's gonna be a class they're gonna be able to take.
Okay, I'm glad you're on the call. Thank you for being here. Can you walk us through what a virtual school is going to look like? I mean, we, the board have to vote on this tonight. So tell me what the virtual classroom look like? Is that something the teachers are gonna be teaching live?
Yes, yes, we're, we're, we, we don't want to, uh, have kids just out there offending for themselves at that point. And like Dr. McGee said, we're responsible for reporting that attendance. So the, the, the student will be logging in with their teacher. If it's secondary, they'll log in with each teacher at a certain class time. We're gonna follow the bell schedule. Elementary will log in with their teacher in the morning. Um, we're gonna try, I, I've told parents when I spoke with them, the first week or two are gonna be heavy on the computer just to learn routines and procedures. But then I know screen time is as a concern. So we will also move to some offline activities, but they will meet with that teacher every day. You know, it's not gonna be anything where they just say, okay, I'll see you next week type situation. But they're gonna walk through that, have the instruction via Google Meet. And, uh, and we're gonna, we've got schedules set out, we'll pick up Chromebooks so they'll have their technology, um, those type of things. And they'll just work through the curriculum just like they would with, with the students in the class.
Okay, so once a student, because I know the district sent out that survey earlier today asking what they're signing up for and I, I realize our numbers are already increasing for the virtual because the A and B option was removed by the state. So with that being said, so once, say hypothetically, I sign up for virtual for my children, you're gonna send me an email, is that correct?
Not immediately, no. We, we, we will, we will, uh, once you sign up for virtual, we submit to a Google form. And we're gathering all those things and we'll, we're, we're still in the planning process, but we will notify everyone next week, kind of start working schedules, let you know when things are happening. And I'll be able to send out emails. It's, it's been kind of a back and forth thing with, uh, people being in and out. And everyone that eats, emails me, they say, can I join? Absolutely. Can I be removed, you know? So we've been moving back and forth, but now I think that we've got a definite plan in place. Like Dr. McGee said, we can start looking at numbers. Then next week, we can really start the communication with the parents and give them more information now that we know who's gonna commit to the virtual and who's gonna commit to face-to-face, if that, if that makes sense.
Okay, yes. So if we're estimating eight thousand students and we've got thirty-seven hundred students signed up as of five minutes ago for virtual, that leaves us forty-three hundred students to go five days face-to-face.
I'll just, I just let you know this and, and I'm not a, I'm not a, I, I do know statistics, but we just got another hundred since I sent Dr. McGee that text. So, so I just have been kind of thinking, you know what? The, the rate, these numbers have gone up since that announcement was made. I wouldn't be surprised if we had forty-five hundred by the time we close it down tomorrow. So I just want to let you know that it just keeps going up virtually. So I, I, I'm, I'm feeling positive about the fact of fewer students in the building, which means we're gonna be able to, to, to get those class sizes smaller, spread people out more. And, and we're working on some things with elementary to keep the class sizes, you know, in a reasonable amount. There's more secondary students signed up for virtual, so I think that's gonna work out. We're gonna be, we're gonna be there. We're, we're doing everything we can to keep the class sizes in the buildings small.
Okay, all right, very good. And just for the record, my children will not be virtual. My children are gonna go to school face-to-face, so you'll, you will not see them. Their teachers will see them within the hallways, so thank you.
Okay, uh, now.
Uh, Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Steele, speak.
Yeah, while, while on that subject, I just, uh, uh, have a two-in-one question. Uh, can you explain, uh, to our, our parents again, um, if a kid starts and say they want to start virtual, but then, hey, they may hear from their friends, they may hear, say, hey, everything is okay, it's safe. Can they go and change that and come back? And if a kid starts in school and finds out they're uncomfortable, they don't feel healthy, uh, can they then go to virtual? Can you give us like one last before we vote? Let us know what the parameters are on changing their decision.
Absolutely. We have stated from pretty much since we started with this Virtual Academy that the district leadership team said, whatever you choose, we were gonna ask you to stay there for the semester. And we understand this is some different situations, but again, with scheduling, we're trying to make things work. We're trying to staff things based on this. And it's just like anything else, we, you know, changing around and, 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 and just for, when we're in normal school, we wouldn't allow those types of schedule changes. I know this is an extenuating circumstance, but we have decided as a district leadership, we were just gonna, whatever you pick the first semester, we're asking you stay in there just because it's our planning, our staffing and all those types of things.
And let me also add, even though we, that's our guidance, our expectation, there're gonna be some circumstances that we gonna have to play a case-by-case that we may have to accommodate. That's just, that's the reality now. We're gonna, hopefully, there will be few, but, uh, because the safety again of, of the students to staff is still our number one priority. So, uh, that, that's gonna, I mean, even though we said that, that's just the reality is that we're gonna have some case-by-case situations. I'm just gonna be honest with you, that we will have to deal with and adjust as we go accordingly.
Okay, board members, did you have any other questions? I would like to hear a statement from Dr. White, please. She's the Director of Secondary Education and how everything is going. And after she finishes, this is part of what we're trying to do to give our parents an idea of still, we're talking about the concern, the education of their children. So, uh, Dr. White, would you come in, please? Yes.
Evening, Madam President, board members, Dr. McGee. So I just want to say as in regards to secondary and, and Dr. McGee did a great job of, of covering the plans. But, um, I just want to say that if you'll take a look at those plans which are posted and you look at those non-negotiables that we have in there, you know, we've, we've tried really hard to have great consistency from K-12, um, with deliveries, face coverings, entry points, visitors, um, scheduled, uh, uh, student drop-offs, pickups, all of those. So I think that when you look at the hard work and dedication that we've put into these plans, you'll see that we're doing all that we can to keep kids safe, um, to educate, you know, students. And, 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 and Mr. Steele asked a really good question about academics and, and I want to, I want to address that just really quickly. You know, principals this summer, before I came on board, they started having those conversations around essential standards. And like Dr. McGee said, you know, they looked at those essential standards, they looked at those gaps. Um, they determined pacing guides that they'll be using. And only that, they looked at the data that they already had, which was that spring NWA, you know, um, assessment that they have. But then they also started looking at pre-tests and how they can utilize pre-test to, to close those gaps. And what you're gonna find in just a minute when we present, um, on platforms, we're going to come to you all with additional platforms that'll help our teachers and that'll help our students. So when we talk about the, the learning loss, you know, we, we, we have a plan, uh, to, to mitigate that. So, so I, I, I just hope that you all have, have, have heard enough from us to, to definitely make a sound decision about moving forward because we are working tirelessly behind the scenes to make sure, um, that we can start school safely. Um, but I, I just want to publicly commend the principals, the teachers, the staff members, uh, the department heads, everybody, Dr. McGee and his leadership. Um, and you'll see, if you, if you check those plans out, you will see that, that there's no stone unturned in those plans. And, and, and we're gonna continue. These plans are fluid. Um, if, if, if you check those plans out daily, you'll notice that they change. You know, as guidance change, um, those plans change. So, uh, even, even tomorrow, there's going to be changes. Um, the high school, uh, team is, is already looking at changes that they want to make. The middle school team, uh, the COE, the academy. We, we had conversations today about, uh, these non-negotiables and how are they going to weave those into their plans and, and, and new guidance that we get? How are we gonna make those changes? So I, I just want to say that, that yet again, we're all working hard, uh, behind the scenes. And if, and if you all see anything, uh, that we're not doing, uh, secondary-wise, please, you know, reach out, tell me. Uh, and, and we'll make sure that, that, that we work on a plan and get it done.
Thank you. Uh, board members, did you have any questions to ask Dr. White? Okay, very good. Oh, very well thought of. Well, at this time, uh, board members, do you have any questions directed at this point, the reopening of school? Because after this meeting, we're going to vote, have an official board meeting where we have to vote on this. That has been mandated that the board has to vote on this. So are there any questions that you may have or concerns before we leave this segment of the reopening of school? If not, thank you for your questions and your patience. And Dr. McGee, thank you for this segment of your presentation. And at this time, board members, we will go back to the strategic plan. Mr. Quinn, uh, did make it. So at this time, I would have him to come on and present his presentation. And so, Mr. Quinn, you may, are you Dr. Quinn or Mr. Quinn?
No, no, I'm not. Madam President, board members, Dr. McGee, um, I'm, I'm sitting, we're, we're talking about a strategic plan, but I'm sitting. I'm, I'm sitting, we're talking about a strategic plan, but I'm sitting here listening to your, everything you're dealing with right now. And it's really extraordinary how school boards are in the middle of this true national crisis and the, the decisions you're making right now that you never remotely thought you would have to think about as a school board member. Uh, it's just, it's really extraordinary to sit here and, and to listen. It, it's really been an honor to, to work with Dr. McGee on the creation of a strategic long-term plan. What I'm bringing to you tonight are the three goals that we had agreed upon a while back. Communication, safety, and academic achievement. We have, just to briefly recap for, for folks listening in at home, we have had long conversations with principals, with the superintendent, with the administration, the cabinet. Uh, a long time ago, we did a day-long session with the school board. And then we conducted a survey of the community that led to 500 people, more than 500 people giving us a, a great deal of input. So you have a, a, a cover memo I sent you this week. And in the cover memo, just to sort of recap that a little bit, in the, in the discussion of academic achievement, what we heard from a lot of people, both internally and externally, was the need for some culture changes to think a little bit differently. Some of the suggestions, instead of, uh, being in-depth suggestions about should we use this curriculum or that curriculum, it was about rethinking how we function on a day-to-day or, or week-to-week basis in, in managing the district. And that the creation of, of three specific goals really fundamentally gives the school board a, a way of judging the superintendent at the end of the year. Creates an easier process to evaluate what the superintendent is doing. And it makes it easier for the superintendent to do his job every day, knowing that he and the board are aligned on what the priorities are for the district. Uh, the communication and the safety goals in some ways are, are very specific, very tactical things that we should be thinking about. But the academic achievement goal, I think in many ways, is the heart and soul of what any school district is all about. And, and I, some people said some things that really jumped out at me as we went through the process, including the quote, "The simple reality is that we need to deal with the fact that we have to create the right culture, and that has been a challenge at times." One school board member said, "We need employees who feel a strong sense of ownership in what we are doing every day." And employees said they felt the board needs to focus on the larger picture, the 30,000-foot view as we look to the future. I'm going to call up now on screen share, uh, the academic achievement goal. There we go. And when we build a culture of excellence and high academic achievement at all schools and across all grade levels, there are four metrics that we're bringing you tonight. One of which is to create a clear set of trackable items that are brought to the board on a very regular basis, so everybody's on the same page. This report would include ACT scores, attendance levels by school, reading at grade level metrics, state letter grades, teacher and student retention numbers. If, if the administration on a regular basis in an easily under, to understand document brings these items to the school board, uh, it creates a much better sense of how we are doing this semester versus last and this year versus last. Uh, it also includes working with building principals to define the percentages of parents at each school who feel connected to the school. Connected is a word that we heard a lot. Do the parents feel connected to a, a particular, a particular school? And then produce a unique development plan for each school that can be basis of the annual review of that principal's performance. So, so really, what are the numbers for each school is tactic number one. Tactic number two, increasing the community and internal engagement with lower-performing schools. And these are items such as engaging the business community to create and sponsor an ongoing campaign focusing on success stories that also reminds young people that it's critical that they stay in school and graduate school. It, it certainly is important to engage the community in different ways. It's also worth thinking about what the ideal graduate looks like in the school district. Each student has very different postgraduate goals. Some want to go to work, some want to go to college, uh, some want to go to the military. Uh, we need to better understand those goals. I think we live in a country that spent 30 years telling all kids they needed to go to a four-year college, and that's just not the case anymore. So we have to help students understand that they have different options and what those options are, and, and hopefully operate a school district that understands that the goals and the needs are different for all students. Rethink how we put talented people in certain jobs. The reality in many ways is that we need our best teachers and best principals in the lower-performing schools. And sometimes in education in general, the best principals and the best teachers want to gravitate to the already high-performing schools, and we need to rethink that. In everything we do, there's a need to remind the community that schools are safe. Break down stereotypes and attitudes that the district is not what it once was. As multiple employees have said to me through this process, you know, if we don't have safe schools, we, we really don't have anything. So that is, um, that is a key in terms of how we think about academic excellence. And then tactic number three involves changing the school board meeting agenda process, devoting less time to routine issues requiring board approval, and creating an agenda structure that allows the board to have more in-depth discussions about larger issues that don't always have an easy, easy, clear answer. Examples, you know, why families are leaving at the sixth grade level. I, I, I heard a lot of discussion about that. Why are some schools performing better than others? How is the district tracking success? And, and then spend less time on individual hiring issues and, and more time really on the more complex, long-term discussions. Giving the superintendent autonomy on hiring and termination issues, and managing a human relations culture where it's okay to remove low-performing employees from their jobs. Really, growing talent and, and removing people who are not getting it done is part of a culture of excellence. Increase employee trust in the board and the district by creating events and tours where board members are out in the schools on, on a regular basis. Dr. McGee spoke earlier tonight, as we go through COVID, of taking his administrative team and having them out in the morning in the schools where parents and students can see them, and they are hands-on, sending a message by being out there that they are part of the COVID process. And I think that type of being out in the district can also be applied to sort of different ways to think about how the board members engage. And the final tactic under academic excellence is improve the use of data to better understand trends. An example of this is coming back to sort of families leaving us at the fifth and sixth grade level, while pulling together data that can look at from which schools they are leaving, why they are leaving. Can we create exit interviews to understand why they are leaving? In other words, creating a world where we can bring better data packages to the board that become the basis of a deeper dive discussion, a, a policy discussion that doesn't necessarily have a clear or defined answer, and, and bringing that type of discussion in front of the board on an ongoing basis. So just to recap, the, um, the metrics to define academic achievement, reports that are easily to define and track, increasing community engagement with lower-performing schools, maybe rethinking how the board agenda is done and using data in different ways. I would say those are the four metrics that we are bringing you as a part of the academic achievement discussion. I will pause there. If we want to sort of talk about these one at a time as we go through the three. Madam, uh, Madam President, I'll, I'll stop there if we want to have discussion about that goal.
Okay. What we will do, Mr. Quinn, uh, so that everybody, we make sure that everybody has a part in everything. And if there are specific questions they need to ask, I will just call the role on this one, okay? And that way, we won't have to crisscross each other. Uh, Ms. Campbell, did you have any, did you want any concerns that Mr. Quinn had?
I'm mute.
I'm mute. Miss, you said some good stuff. I'm mute.
Natalie. Which button do I?
She's unmuted.
Okay. What I said was, the main thing is this board needs to learn to work together. We have enough problems in North Laurel that we need to solve a lot of them. And the board can be the lead in taking care of some problems. Just like starting school this year will be a nightmare for most of the teachers because it's going to be so, so unstructured, because we don't know what the state's going to do at this point. But I just think that, that we can help a lot more if, if we're asked to.
Oh, very good. The next person is Ms. Huggins.
Uh, I just want to say thank you for, uh, working on these things. I feel like I see some of the things I suggested in there, and I haven't been a board member for very long. And, uh, and, and I agree with Ms. Campbell that, um, there's a lot of good that as a board, working together, we can do for the community. Well, for the schools that then impacts our community and our, and our city.
Okay. Dr. Reddick?
Thank you, Mr. Quinn, for all your work, but I haven't, I have no questions.
Okay. Mr. Steele?
Uh, great job, Joe. Good report, some, some very good issues that you brought to the forefront. I'm particularly interested in finding out, uh, from those individuals who decide to leave our wonderful school district, why they're deciding to leave and, and, uh, it may, may be some extenuating circumstances that we can, we can deal with pretty easily. But I certainly agree with all of that, and I really want us to, to look at engaging the public much more on this and allowing people to, to just, uh, to do their job.
Yeah, and Tracy, I, I would very much agree with what you just said, and I think Dr. McGee certainly thinks this way too. He and I have had this discussion a lot, but for instance, why are they leaving? Well, if a, if a data report is put in front of you that shows from which schools they're leaving and sort of what are the commonalities there, it, it allows you as board members to have a larger, more philosophical, policy-driven discussion about how to address that as opposed to smaller discussions about smaller issues. So I, 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 I agree that that matters a lot.
Okay. Mr. Steele?
Um, Temple. Ms. Temple? That, that goal wasn't out of my pocket, so that was the first that I've seen it. But, um, yeah, I think that this is going to be very helpful for us to come to go. That was one of the reasons we really wanted a strategic plan, so we could have a focus and know which way to go, and really appreciate all the work you've done.
Okay. Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Joe. Thank you for listening. Thank you for putting school safety, that's my pet project. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Quinn, uh, that was excellent work that you did, that you gave us some good reading ahead last night. It was like a nightmare, but it was honest about that we, as a board, we need to change the culture of the district by being positive and listening to teachers. And, and by the way, when you and Mr. Steele were talking about why some of the sixth graders leave campuses, you did indicate in there that some parents feel like the middle school has too many students in it. You know, 600 kids would be fine, but we're sitting up looking at like 1,200 students. Do you know what I mean? They would like to see a smaller number for their children to attend, because a lot of kids can't adjust to big crowds. And I do appreciate you for putting that in there. It was from many families that 600 students in a middle school is simply too many for their children to function. That was the statement you put in that report. And work needed to be done for the district to bring consistency to what had been taught from classroom to classroom. Very good point. And then two, teachers need to know that we support them. And if we can change that culture, we support teachers. And then we don't suffer from the good old boy syndrome that you had in here. We hire people because they're qualified and not because you're my friend, but because of your qualifications, and I appreciate you putting that in that report. There's a need for a community-based campaign that drives higher students attendance. And you stated that if, as a board, if we could get more connected with the community in job placements, maybe perhaps this would motivate, we would have a higher ratio of graduation. But when there's nothing for them to do, as you stated in this, we are in much need, the economy to develop and take advantage, because the district is very strong, but we need to communicate more with the community. What kind of jobs can you give us? And I appreciate that, but you did one wonderful job. And I would like for whoever the future superintendent is, that you would collaborate, have the opportunity. This could be craft. We can craft this, the goals that best fit their style of leadership. You understand? If that's been properly where you could understand it, that's again.
Madam President, thank you for the kind words. I've, I've really become passionate about this project and about this district. And I tried to be honest and very honest in, in what I brought you tonight, because honestly, if I didn't bring you an honest document, it wasn't going to do any of you any good. And, uh, Dr. McGee believes strongly, I think, in, in what you just touched on, uh, the need to integrate with the community. And, you know, if, if God willing, we ever finally get to sort of be in a room together again, I'm a big believer in like box lunch diplomacy. If we could sit down with business and community leaders, talk about jobs, and talk about how they can help us remind kids to stay in school and what we can all do together, there's a whole piece of work there. And help tell our success stories. I mean, success stories are very important. I, I know you've been sitting here a long time tonight, so I'm not really going to. The, the communication and safety goals in front of you are pretty self-explanatory. I will tell you all that the COVID section was written about a month ago before COVID became a full-time job for all of you, so obviously, um, that will change. Couple of quick thoughts. I think your communication director needs help. Uh, I think most districts your size have two or three people managing that in terms of really beefing up what you're doing digitally, integrating with the community, telling success stories. I think you have a talented communication director, but he could use a little help. The other points in here, I, I think maybe when it comes to safety, you could restructure a little bit, who's managing what. But again, I, I think those are fairly self-explanatory items. And again, I think going forward, my final point, I think you could possibly write more defined job descriptions for the key people you are hiring. A job description keeps the train on the tracks as you look at different people, and a job description associated with the pay bands really give you greater clarity. And it makes the superintendent's job a little easier, because he knows what he's shopping for when he's looking to fill a key position. So, uh, I'll stop there again.
Now, you did great. You told us, uh, you told us some very good information that if we wouldn't have so many problems, we would reduce the obstacles if we would remove poor-performing employees. For many years, the termination was practically unheard of. But now there are those who do not have the soul to really and truly believe in what they're doing, believe in the love for children, to really to give their best. So nothing is perfect, but if the board, if we stayed attached and do those things, if we need what things are needed, just stand up and let's do right, because nobody trusts anybody in the district, and that's another culture we got to break.
Trust is important. And, and Madam President, one thing one of you said, and I'm not sure who it was, but the day we did the long six-hour session in the library, one of you said, "We need people who feel ownership in what we are doing."
Right.
And you know, if you're going to carve one thing on a plaque on the wall, you know, that sums up education in many, many ways. And that, that, that comment has always stayed- And that comment has always stayed with me as we've gone through this process.
You had it in your report. Now, may I ask, our board members before Mr. Quinn leaves, do you have any questions for him? And when will you see us again? Is this all you're going to do for us for the money we paid you?
Well, I'm happy to stick around and continue the agreement. Dr. McGee is a real professional. He and I have a great relationship, very honest. Again, I mentioned two things. I think you could use some help with creation of a package of job descriptions, and I think you could think through the community engagement a little differently. And you know, again, I feel passion, but I'm gonna get this piece of it across the finish line, and I'd love to stay with you, but that's up to you and your superintendent.
Coach, you told me about the curriculum part, a packet that the board really had never had an opportunity to get. Remember that? Is that correct? Mr. Quinn?
I believe so. I believe that there are some things that, you know, have never come to you packaged the way they could be.
Right. That's what I thought. But Mr. Quinn, if there's no more to discuss, we will move on to the next. This is the board workshop. And as you've heard your accolades, you did a great job. And thank you, and you know how to get in touch with us through Ms. Cole Quick to see, so she can in terms, you know, get to us as board members, okay?
Thank you, Madam President.
And thank you for your time, sir. All right. You're dismissed, Mr. Quinn, and thank you. All right, at this time, board members, we are going to the employment... No, it's not. That's the wrong sheet. It's... We look Jacob Smith, Mr. Smith. That's where you are. Are you there?
Yes, ma'am, I am. I think Ms. Alexander, unless she did it already, I could be... I could be wrong, but the MOU for Archford, has that already been presented?
No, that's Ms. Lian. I'm sorry. I didn't... It's the 2020 MOU Archford Day Treatment, the Executive Director's Special Services, on page 29. You may begin, Ms. Alexander.
Okay, guys, I'm presenting this to you tonight at the board workshop because I'm going to be presenting it at the board meeting for your approval, but I've got some really exciting news, some good things, so I wanted to be able to bring it to you tonight. In the past, the Point Day Treatment was in Little Rock on 65th Street. And last year, Archford went in with them, and they started doing the educational piece while the Point did the mental health piece. So I am very happy to say now Archford has taken over the whole day treatment project, but we were able to convince them to come to North Little Rock in the city limits. They will be leasing our old Lynch Drive Elementary School, which is really good for us for many reasons. So every day treatment student, not just North Little Rock, Little Rock, Jacksonville, Plaski County, lots of other districts, we will receive money on every student that attends the Archford Day Treatment, which is now called Horizons. So we've got some income coming in because of that. The other great thing about this is we no longer have to send buses all over Little Rock to get to day treatment. We were going to Youth Home, which is out on Colonel Glen. We were going to Methodist, which is out off of Shackleford. And then we were going to the Point, which was out off of 65th Street. With some of our most volatile students going on very long bus rides, you can imagine we had a lot of discipline problems. So this is also another great thing that this day treatment is going to be here. I just wanted to also say they were really looking hard at Jacksonville for their, to locate there. So with the help of Susan Miller and Mr. Stone and myself, we did a hard sell and got them to come to North Little Rock. So I'm really excited that they're gonna be in our community. The other thing is, they are creating a class for self-contained students. We've never had that day treatment option before, so that's another great thing. All of their staff, we are providing our staff development for, so I have, they've all attended all of my special education trainings this summer, and they're gonna be allowed to attend all of our day treatment so that they will be providing services very similar to what we do in North Little Rock, which gives us a little more control over curriculum and compliance. So I'm very excited about that. So I just wanted you guys to know that. So that big price tag that you see on there of $495,000, that is for 50 spots. Half of that is regular ed, half of that is special ed. But now finally, we're having some income coming back in to offset that cost. I don't know the exact dollar amount yet. Kathy Hale and I will be working on coding that in eSchool so I can get that to you. I just wanted you guys to know that this is a good thing for us, and I'll be presenting that MOU to you at the board meeting. And that's all I have.
Great job. Do we have any questions from any of the board members pertaining to the Archford Day Treatment Center that's been open?
One question. I know we're gonna bill, you said, and get some reimbursement. That's great. But who pays for that at a what budget, I guess, is my question.
So the special ed seats, the 25, those come out of my budget. The other 25 regular ed students come out of general operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions or concerns?
How much we spend every year, or is this more or less, or how much?
A little bit less because they took it over, the tuition decreased, not by much. We were spending 10.5 per student before, and now we're spending $9,900. So it's a little bit less money because of the Archford taking it over.
Other questions? Ms. Higgins? Huggins?
It's kind of a piggyback on Ms. Temple's. Is 50 students about the normal for us, or is that a guesstimate, or?
That's a great question, Ms. Huggins. 50 is usually where we start. We always have the option to purchase more seats, and every single solitary year, we have gone over 50. So it's a good starting point, but I probably will at some point have to come back to you guys mid-year and say we've filled our 50 spots, and we're gonna be asking for more. We just have a big need for day treatment in our district.
How many students received day treatment last year?
Last year, I can't tell you the breakdown between special ed and regular ed. It's usually about half and half, but we had 50.50 spots at the Point, excuse me. Then we had three at Youth Home, and then we had about four or five. It kind of varies as students move in and out of the district at Methodist.
And Youth Home's not doing day treatment this year, right?
They are not. So we are gonna incorporate those kids into... We're gonna really solely use this Horizon since it's in North Little Rock as long as we can. We may increase our spots, but we're gonna use them because they are in North Little Rock.
But it's not like you're gonna come back and say we need 50 more seats, probably.
No, usually we come back and say we need five more seats. It's never gonna be 50 more. I should say never, but I have never seen that happen.
We're gonna hope not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Nan? Thank you for your hard work in getting the building over in North Little Rock, you and Mr. Stone, okay? Shout out. And those board members who do not know where Lynch Drive is, it's in North Little Rock, down this black street, and you can't miss it. You'll see a sign. So again, thank you, Ms. Alexander, for giving us the stone work. Okay, if there's nothing more, any more questions to her? We will now do the district calendar. Dr. Smith? Wow, nice student tag.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for the compliments. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, members of the board, for being here tonight. Last board meeting, we presented you a calendar. There were some concerns in regard to the issues with the calendar. And so we went back to the drawing board based on the recommendations, and we have since gone through LPPC and CPPC, and both of those entities have approved this calendar you're going to see tonight. Fixing to share my screen and show, hopefully point out some of the changes that were made, so bear with me.
Okay. Did you officially, would you give us the quote? You're showing us everything, okay? Thank you.
I'm trying to.
You were up for a minute.
Can you guys see the calendar?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so some of the noted changes in this, there was struggle with this workday that's present on August 24th, 21st, because we now have two workdays. This was removed from this January 4th date and placed on the front end. The reason this was done is because we are required by law to have 178 student instruction days. And so with a start date now of the 24th, our goal was still to get out by Memorial Day. And so we had to push a lot of our professional development and workdays onto the front end of the calendar, which was present in the previous iterations. But I don't, I think this workday was still on January 4th on the last I brought to you guys. So we have pushed that on the front end. We have also removed the 30th of October and the 12th of February, which were those days that would be closed, either a school closing or district closing. And that was because of those parent-teacher conferences that were occurring. And those have all kind of been shuffled into Thanksgiving break. And so now we have a full Thanksgiving break, a full Christmas break, and a full spring break. And then the scattered holidays that are always present as well. There was also, so you have to have, there's a state law that says you have to have a minimum 40 student instruction days per each nine weeks and a maximum of 50. So as you can see in this little chart down here, we did our best. We're kind of stacked on the back end. But what we had to do is now our last day of the second nine weeks is the day after we get back. And that special color that was not present before is a remote learning day. So what we are asking on this day, January 4th, and the two parent-teacher conference days each semester, that we are going to have a remote learning day where students will participate in their learning off-site. Teachers will be present in the building, but students will not be in the classroom. And that's kind of to accommodate this parent-teacher conferences and the removal of that workday. It's gonna be a long day for teachers in October 27th, and October 29th, and February 9th, and February 11th. But this was a lot of back and forth. We looked at different ways we could manipulate it. And I'm sure this does not satisfy every concern, but what we were charged with doing was really attempting to give that full Thanksgiving break so everybody could enjoy their family, and those that had made plans can get to stick to them. And then us doing something with these parent-teacher conference days, and that's kind of what we arrived at. And because we had to move that workday on the front end, we thought this would be an appropriate day for a remote learning day as well. So there's five of those embedded, and then, as I said, the full breaks off for what we are used to. Are there any questions?
Questions, board members? How many teachers voted for this?
There was, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but the estimate we had during LPPC was somewhere mid-600s.
Okay.
You did good.
Okay.
They listened.
Okay, and so the both committees agreed to it, right?
Yes, ma'am, unanimously.
Okay, and they got the week for Thanksgiving?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay, that's a good thing. Okay, well, we appreciate your presentation, and it will be coming up in the next session of our board meeting. Any concerns, opinions to Dr. Smith on that, on the calendar?
Madam President, if you'll permit me, before we jump off of me real quick, you charged me last board meeting with the question about the painter. I explored that within my department. Anybody that has the title of painter within the district is being paid appropriately in accordance with our policies, and I just wanted to make you aware of that before we left my portion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. He's bringing it to me because there was a painter, we have two painters in the district, and they were concerned about having a number-two position on that. But it was explained in that there's, that's a new position if they open it. Is that the clarity that I'm getting, Ms. Dr. Smith?
We only have a painter one at the moment, ma'am. We've never had a painter two. And so that is, that is where all the roads have led me in regards to the conversation that we're having now.
Dr. Reddick?
Well, I have you, Dr. Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
A question is being asked of me by several staff, the pay thing. Can somebody, can, I'm sorry, can you explain how the pay is gonna go? Because they were, everybody was paid up until August 15th. Yet, school is not starting till the 24th, and so they're supposed to get paid on the 25th, and they're worried that they're not gonna get paid.
Yes, ma'am. So Dr. McGee and Mr. Brown and myself all sat down and had a conversation. And it is the decision at the moment, there will be people that are overpaid on the front end for a little while based on the pushback of school, but we thought that it would be the most beneficial for our staff and all, everyone involved, that pay would stay the same, on the same 24, on the 24 payments that appear throughout the year. And so as the way school is starting, that is the decision that has been made. And Dr. McGee wanted to really make sure that everybody had that consistency across the board as far as the money that they were expecting to come in so they could take care of their needs.
Basically, the, I'm sorry. So basically, so basically, the raise, you know, some, like the teachers, they got raises. The raises, the money won't be like the 25th, will it start like September, or is it gonna start on the 25th?
No, ma'am, this is a physical year, and so any raises that were implemented, new contracts have been provided, and we have started, excuse me, we have started the process of the 24 payments. Now, as our, like 190s and teachers come on board and they start to get paid, that will be reflected. But those staff members that are like classified, that are 245-day employees, they have already seen that adjustment.
I have a question, Mr. Smith. What about the teachers that are coming on board? When will they get paid their first paycheck?
We have made no adjustments to pay. I don't want to speak outside of the bounds, but whenever they were normally planning on being paid, that is whenever they're going to be paid.
That is correct, Madam President and members of the board. We made no changes. I want to make sure that we kept everything the same because it was not the teacher's fault that school started late. So everybody should be scheduled to get paid at the dates that Mr. Williams, Donald Williams sent out to the whole faculty.
My question is, we have young teachers, and I was wondering if they were gonna have to wait three weeks to get paid?
I would think, Ms. Campbell, to answer your question, would be that it would stay as normal as we have done previously in the policy regarding new teachers. And Mr. Brown is here. He can elaborate just a little bit more in depth on that if he needs to.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. McGee. The pay schedule is unchanged. So teachers who were planning to be paid first, their first paycheck on 8/25 will be paid on 8/25. There are some teachers on extended contracts that their first pay was scheduled for 8/10. That'll be paid on 8/10. So the original pay schedule that went out, the, for instance, for most teachers who are 192-day teachers, they are scheduled to be paid on 8/25, and that has remained unchanged. Does that answer your question, Ms. Campbell?
So I have a que, I'm still trying to figure out, will they get paid in two weeks? Because I've had 900 teachers ask me when they're getting paid.
Hello?
So the teachers, teachers who are 192-day teachers who normally get paid on 8/25 will get paid on 8/25. They'll get paid in, let's see, 5, 10, 11, 12, 13 days on 8/25. Tuesday, August 25th will be their first day of pay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And so this is a workshop. Ms. Brown? And so since this is a workshop, uh um Mr. Brown, I think Ms. Campbell had another question she wanted to ask you. Because seem like there are always some glitches in the business office about non-employees. And what did you want him to have for you?
I want to know how much money this school district has in grand total.
Let me unmute you. Um as of what day?
As of when we start school, how much money do we have?
Okay, I can give you that. So you want the cash balance in the bank as we start school? Okay.
We don't need to start in the hole.
Uh well, we're, we will not start in the hole. We do, we do have a uh sufficient cash balance and the state does. They have started our monthly uh payments uh to us in the bank. So um our revenue, we're expecting to be just slightly lower than last year. We're predicting just slightly lower revenue, but not significant. And um so our monthly income, uh we're not expecting to be affected by this. Especially if we go, if we're opening up and we're running five days a week. There are a few funds, such as special ed catastrophic, uh Ms. Alexander and I had a special education budget meeting today. She has a few funds that would be negatively impacted if we have to go virtual at some point in time. But otherwise, uh we're expecting our revenue to be uh approximately the same, just a little bit lower than last year. But um if we keep our expenses in check, then we're set for a satisfactory year financially. So we're not gonna begin the year in the hole though. But I'll use our uh cash balance in the bank as of um the first day of school.
Okay, Ms. Campbell, did he answer your question? No, he said you didn't answer a question, so you get that information to her, to the board? Mr. Brown? She said you didn't answer.
Let's be clear about what uh information she's wanting. So what she, what I didn't answer was she wants the cash balance on the first day of.
Yes.
So we'll have to wait till the first day of school to get that cash balance. But I can provide that to the board uh when that day comes.
Okay.
Okay, she's satisfied with that answer and uh the concern, uh Mr. Brown, as you understand. Everybody been telling us, we have to be very cognitive of our money, because we do not know how many students we're gonna get back. Uh who's doing what? And really, we can't afford to, cause people see money, don't mean that we can spend that money. We have to stay in line, you know, to keep our finances a buckboard. And I know a lot of things that we've gotten supposed to be coming through the CARES Act. But CARES Act doesn't come in until September, so uh hopefully, that money will come back to us. For those receipts that you've sent into them. So how's that looking, Mr. Brown?
As of, as of right now, we've spent about a third of our CARES Act funding.
Okay, a third, okay.
We've spent about a third of it. So, uh but I do want to speak to that in just a moment. Um so, and and I too, we're we're wa- watching our expenses for this year. I mean, we're gonna do that, that's part of what we do annually. But there are some areas, such as special ed, there are other areas that are more severely impacted by this than other departments. And I'm talking specifically like child nutrition. So um child nutrition, they're funded based on the number of meals they serve. So we've gotta be, we've gotta know how many are, how many virtual students we're gonna have, how many we're gonna have onsite. And we've gotta have a plan to get meals to those students that are virtual, so we can be reimbursed. And our child nutrition uh department can be sufficiently funded. But I did want to mention that uh for our state funding, that's based on last year's attendance and last year's uh students. So our funding for this year is based on last year's numbers. If we have a decline in student enrollment this year, it will affect next year's funding and next year's revenue. So we do know our state funding, uh we do have those projections out uh from ADE. So we know what our enrollment was last year. We do know our um projected uh revenue for this year based on last year's enrollment. So if we see a decline in enrollment this year, it will affect next year's funding and next year's budget.
Very good thought, but that's why I'm saying, if you can keep us abreast on this, that every meeting, letting us know something with. You and Dr. Reynolds and Dr. White and Dr. McGee, keeping up with our, and and Ms. Smith and um Ms. Alexander. Uh about our attendance, because this is what I'm saying, because people say we got money, they think we can just spend money because you can see it. And it just doesn't work that way. You know, and so that's why, and those are some very valid questions that Ms. Campbell asked you. And so thank you for the report. Did any other board members have anything? Dr. McGee, I would like to say it's one thing we did forget to talk about, with those meals on wheels. You know how the kids would get the food in case they went virtual?
Yeah, we we tended to leave uh working out the details with that uh Madam President and members of the board. And we're gonna have a plan, and and uh we're gonna have a plan to make sure that we get those designated kids their meals.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Brown, for your comments, and I thank you, Dr. McGee. At this time, if there are any questions, any more questions, board members, you're doing good. Mrs. Steele, can I go with you? No, I was saying, can I go with you?
Where you heading, Tracy? You bringing us dinner?
No, uh you uh, at this time, we will have an update from Mr. Stone. On the uh, on the updated policies. For updated policies of Equity Service, updated policy. Uh give those, those on page thirty, Mr. Stone.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can now.
Okay, good evening, Madam President, board members, and Dr. McGee. Uh I'd like to say, uh this has been a a very productive board meeting so far, board workshop so far. Uh tonight, I want to go back uh just real briefly. We do have a survey, an exit survey for our parents now. I worked with uh one of our teachers and and our communication. And we do have an exit interview for our parents that where 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 we will be able to ask questions of why they're leaving. And and also get some uh good feedback from our parents that are leaving us. So we do have that survey ready, all of our secretaries uh and registrars will have that to give to the parents. We're decentralized, and our registration department will be able to gift that out to all of our schools as school began. Uh also, it's an online uh data port. And then it's also, uh if parents cannot access online, we do have paper copies. So I did want to give you that brief update. Uh I want to share my screen with you uh tonight uh about the policies. You guys have them in front of you uh for, I guess, about a week now. Can you guys see? Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay, I want, let me move this over. Okay, so what what I sent to you guys is uh the policy summary for, from ASBA. ASBA did not have a a huge session uh where they changed a lot of our student policies this year. Uh what I, I I gave you a summary of all the things that were changed according to section four, which is the student policies. Uh and a lot of them were the legal references and things like that. They they made no major changes in in the student section. Uh I guess it was due to COVID. So we 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 spent a lot of our time on the handbook structure or restructuring of our handbook this this year. I do want to uh just point out that anything that you saw that was in a blue uh blue lettering and strike through. Those were the things that they removed from the policies. And anything that was read and underlined, uh those were things that they added to the policies. I did put the policy changes in your packet for you to look at and and come up or formulate questions that you 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 may want to ask about each. I did not include the entire policy, however, because uh it would have been a lot of pages to look at and overwhelming. But I did include everything that was changed in the section four. And enough information where you could read and comprehend the changes that were made. I want to uh, that there's several on here uh that we went, that that's on here. So I want to uh yield and and I'll offer you guys an opportunity to ask questions about any of the policies that you saw. Or that you may have questions about uh before we move on.
Okay, did you all have any questions, board members, about the update on the policies that began on page thirty?
Just for clarification, Mr. Stone, you said these came from the ASBA?
Yes ma'am, directly from ASBA.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, if there are no, are there other questions, board members, on this? If not, we will move uh forward now uh for the twenty twenty one parent-student handbook. Mrs. Steele, Mrs. Steele, Mr. Stone?
Yes ma'am. I will continue to share my screen, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about the uh the hand. Can you, can you guys see that uh screen, did it come up? Okay, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the handbook and how we uh, what I do as I facilitate the changes in the handbook. There were more than fifty individuals involved in the changes and the restructuring of the handbook. That which included students, parents, staff, administrative staff, uh teachers, uh and all of the above. So what we, what what I do, in the past, I have um, in the past, I pulled that group into one group. And I real, I I real quickly realized that the student's voice was not heard. And and sometime the parent voice was not heard, not not intentionally, but educators are. With the students and with the things that go on day to day, and so their voices were always uh out uh outshadowing the the what, the voices of our parents and our students. So what I started doing a few years ago is having a uh separate meeting for all. So I meet with the big group, uh with the administrators and and everybody involved, uh that needed to be involved. And then I also meet with a separate group, the parent group. And then I have several student group meetings, uh so that they can all have a voice in what happens in the in the handbook. This year, one of the things that came out uh specifically from the parent group was we want a way. That we can look at this book and and find information quickly. And so uh we we got together, and since we didn't have a lot of policy changes, we we tore the book apart and and restructured it this year. So some of the things that that uh changed in the book, if you would notice, there there's Fred. Of course, I've added the uh board members in there. The calendar has not been updated yet because we're waiting on a uh an approved calendar by uh by you guys. Uh but I did add.
Uh excuse me, going too fast. Go back down.
Yes ma'am.
Down. I'm trying to see, uh Mr. Stone, what I see, go to the, go to the, where you got us as board members, was that the one on board members?
Board members, yes.
Yes. Uh where's Dr. Williams on there? Did you see it? Uh what year did you have me going out, Mr. Stone?
I don't have a, let's see, I don't have a year, N- November twenty nineteen, that, what is that year supposed to be?
I just got on the board last year, Mr. Stone. And if I'm on the board for three years, add it up. This is going on my second year.
Okay, so that, 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 we'll, we'll make that change for you. Uh that's what the meeting's about, all the changes that you need to see made, so I'll make that a change for you.
Okay.
This is Ms. Huggins, my address and phone number, that's not my address and phone number.
Okay, uh if you will get that to Ms. Call quick, cause she gets the, she gives me those things, I will change that as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Williams was, went out, I was already off the board, Mr. Stone.
Mr. Stone, I'm glad you're not in this room.
Oh, it's, it's okay. All right, and it's.
Very good, anyone else having a questions on theirs? None? Okay, Mr. Stone, you may continue.
Okay, all right, so one of the things that the um, the parents wanted, that that they needed was the chain of command. This is something that was on our website, but it was difficult sometime to, for the parents to find. We we act, we knew where it was, but they did, so we added this to the handbook in order for them to have a quick access to uh the chain of command. If they had any kind of issues, like a- as in academic, athletic, disciplinary, this is the chain of command or the flow chart that will help them get their problems resolved. And so.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Stone, in looking at this, you are the Executive Director of Student Support Service and Equity, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Should you be at every level of the student affairs? Because you play in this, every time there's an academic, athletics, special education, something, you have to be there, is that not correct? Hello?
That, that.
That is correct, isn't it, Mr. Stone? If you only have this job down here for transportation and disciplinary. And if you have that job, you ought to have, uh you should have been included. Because also your office, you know, you would be the advocate of students on every level. Of of uh special education, disciplinary, and athletics and academics. All I'm saying is, you did not quote yourself correctly. You did say two things, but what I'm trying to tell you, anytime one of these events come up, you have to be what? Involved, because you are advocates for all the students on every level. Just giving you your props, Mr. Stone.
Yes ma'am, I appreciate that, and we'll, we'll, I'll visit with uh the interim and or superintendent and and we'll, we'll get those changes made.
Cause you have to, you, you know, you're doing a good job, but just, uh, you know what I mean? Just put in the correct perspective, thank you.
Yes, yes ma'am. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not sure I understand what, what Donna's saying. Let's just look at the academic issue. If it's going through the teacher, to the building administrator, then to the directors of either elementary or secondary, when in that process would you be involved?
If there, if there is an equity issue with a student, and I think what she's saying, I I should be involved in that. Anything equity, uh I, it, so if there's an equity issue, that's where she's saying I should be involved. I- if it's related to academic, athletics, disciplinary, all of the above. Um if it's an equity issue with a teacher or something like that, or adult, then that's HR. So anything that involves students, where it becomes an issue with a student, that's where I'm involved.
There you go. What you say, Ms. Temple, he didn't hear you?
If he's an academic issue. So it may or may not be involved in an academic issue, it would be if you had an equity issue. I I guess I'm just trying to understand where you'd be involved in some, I understand the disciplinary and transportation, but I guess I'm trying to understand others.
Okay, uh what are you trying to get, uh? Are you through, Ms. Temple?
Yeah.
Okay then, uh next page, go slow now, Mr. Uh.
I'm gonna.
Huggins had a question too.
Okay, I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna go back up. I was gonna, I'm just pointing out here on this page here, uh all red, the chain of command contact. I wanted, we added this uh as another uh a communication uh means for the parents to contact their proper people. So that's on the 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 chart here, they can find a contact, a phone number and email address for each. So that's where, so the parents can have a quick access to to the people that they're need to, needing to be visiting with. Now, I, is there something I need to go back to, Huggins, that that you were trying to see, or or can I?
No, I'm good, it was. No, I'm good. It was just my address, the address and phone number weren't mine.
Absolutely. Okay, so what we did in this hand this year, uh over the years, I if you've been here uh for some time. You remember there were, there were three handbooks, uh elementary, middle and high school handbook. Uh we condensed that over the years and it's evolved into what what we had last year, where we had different sections within the handbook. Now, this year, uh with the reconstruction, we do not have the different sections, is one handbook now, uh with one section. Uh the parent group was very ver- uh vocal on on wanting to be able to quickly find things. So what we what we did is categorize each of the uh topics within the handbook. Uh and we categorized them as academic, attendance, and the different topics you see extracurricular. Uh health and wellness, parent engagement, student conduct, transportation and other. So we placed them in our table of contents alphabetically. And then on top of placing those app- alphabetically, we we underneath each one is also alphabetically. That way, parents can have an easier way to find things that that they're uh looking for within the handbook. So so the restructuring of the handbook has happened and 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 we're we're proud to say that we're. Uh we're ready to, ready to move forward with it. Now, the other things that's within the handbook, there were some red topics, a red lines in your handbook that you saw uh over the last week. There were very few, uh all the policies that were changed uh due to ASBA, which were very few. All of those policies are not within the handbook, so we had very few changes within the handbook as it relates to policy. There were some practices type things that we add it, uh that I I'm I'm a collector of information from the schools. We are a service department, so we we uh reach out to the schools. And the schools uh gives us the information on how uh we are trying to operate. We meet as a team and we discuss those things and we place them in the handbook as they are agreed upon. So there were some things that you saw and read that may have changed, uh like on this page five. Nineteen and a half credits required in January to participate in senior activities. Or that came from the high school, from the practices that they were were uh doing. They they best practices were to allow the 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 seniors to engage once they got to the nineteen and a half credit. So that was something that they, the high school discussed and uh gave to me as as a a practice that they wanted to do. For our handbook, so that was added in. And then just if you went through, there was different things. One thing I want to, and I'm going fast because it's down the page, down in the book somewhere, okay?
Page forty-five.
I'm sorry?
That's a, was it page forty-five or something?
I'm not sure if it was page four, no, no, it's uh, I was going to the discipline rubrics. Uh one thing uh that this year that uh come, I I've gotten, I I got a request from our LPPC. They wanted to, they they were saying the teachers wanted to have something at the elementary level. Uh by way of a discipline rubric, so that everyone across the district can can practice the same things. So here, we pulled a team of of administrators from the elementary level together. And uh we went through, we used the high school or secondary uh rubric as as a uh platform. And we went through each one of the codes. And as a group, they came up with uh discipline things uh or consequences that students could possibly face. Uh if they committed certain certain acts uh within our in our policy. So uh we do have a discipline rubric now for the elementary level as well as the secondary level. So that is all read as well, and and that's in our book for our parents to utilize as well. I I can't hear.
I muted it.
Hang on.
Okay.
Okay, she's done.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Stone?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a a text from uh somebody that said apps are needed to be added to the flow chart of academics and discipline.
Uh repeat that, what what needs to be added?
Apps are needed to be added to the flow chart of appi- academics and discipline.
Try it one more time. My 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 internet connection is is freezing on me.
Okay. Apps needed to be added to the flow chart of academics and discipline, and this is from Lee Tackett.
Needed to be add- added to flow charts, okay? Academic?
Of academics and discipline.
And discipline. Thank you.
Okay.
Was there anything else?
That did.
You got the, anything else that you guys as a board would like to, that this is, this is a working session. So if there's anything that you guys would like for me to address. Before I bring it back to you and on the third Thursday, uh I would, I would love to have those ideas at this time. So I'm I'm taking notes so that we can uh address those.
Do you have any concern? I have, okay, wait a minute, call roll. Ms. Camel expressed hers. Did you have anything concerning the handbook?
Yes, I have too. So on page seventy-eight, which continues from page seventy-seven in the district website. It's a list of uh information that we're required to put on our website. And what has been left off of there is our district dyslexia programs. That state required information that should be on the website.
Page seventy-eight, you said?
Yes.
Okay, that's not lining up with this. Uh di- dyslexia?
Um, yeah, so over there at the, yeah, the top of page seventy-eight. Um there's that list that goes one, then B, C, D, yep, in that list right there. Yep, our district dyslexia program needs to be in there. There's uh there's specific uh reporting requirements that we have for that. It's on our website, I I'm pretty sure. It's just not in that list.
Okay, oh, I I have a a note there.
Okay, and then um we have sections for both special education and five oh four for parents to figure out. How to get help for their kids um for those, but I. I feel like we need to have another one of those for parents seeking out help for kids with dyslexia. How to get their kids identified and and services provided.
Okay, noted noted.
Because they may or may not fall under five oh four or special education.
Okay, I will, I will work with uh Ms. Alexander on that. Uh so what what kind of wording we need to to do for that? So I I I've noted that and that will be something we'll work on before we bring it to the board uh on the regular board meeting.
All right, those were my two things.
All right, thank you so much.
Uh, okay, next person, uh Dr. Reddits?
I just have one thing, Mr. Stone. Great job. Lot of hard work was put into this, and that's it.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Mrs. Steel?
No questions. Good job.
Said the temple?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Um, did you fix on page two where the middle school principal left off? Uh, did you get that updated?
Page two.
You need to add Mr. Kane. He's not listed on there. That's on my list to say as well.
Yeah, yeah.
The North Waterlock Middle seventh and eighth grade, the principal needs to be listed.
Okay.
On page five. Um I just got a question about, it says transcripts for students taking concurrent credit courses as partial fulfillment. Of the required full day of class for students in grades nine, twelve are to be received by the school within two days. At the end of the semester in which the course is taken. And I guess I'm just wondering, what if they don't get their grades in two days after the end of the course? I'm I'm. It's just not, that wasn't completely clear.
Okay, uh you're on page five and eh give me a reference underneath.
Um, uh the first paragraph that says students. Yeah, two days.
Okay, uh allow me, allow me to work with Ms. Legay and get you uh an understanding of the secondary. Uh curriculum team and get you an understanding for of that. And if it's not clear, we will. We will um we'll clear that up for for you.
Okay, and then I got a couple of other things that are more nitpicky that I probably just need to swick by. Before the meeting, but the checkout policy for COVID, I know we probably don't want to completely redo it. For maybe just this year, but are we gonna change anything about the way we check kids out? I think it's on page uh. Let's see what page that is. That is gonna be page nineteen. Uh, we're gonna have people coming in to check them out. I heard earlier someone say that you're supposed to call, have your kids. Someone will walk your kids out to you.
Okay, so this is a, this is a unique year. And we are going to, we we we're gonna have things in the handbook that uh that are for typical years. But we're gonna have some procedures in place for COVID this this uh pandemic uh year. So some things we 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 don't want to kind of change within the handbook, but there are some procedures that we may follow. Due to COVID and the things that we're having to face. So that, some procedures for those those type things. Cause we don't want parents entering in and out of our buildings and things like that, but we'll we'll make that clear and communicate that with our parents as well.
Will you go back to page thirteen?
Yes, I will.
Up at the top.
I'm there.
Right there, where it says smart core curriculum. You see the twenty twenty? Should that be twenty twenty-one?
Let me, allow me to check because we we, in past years, in past years, we've had. Uh multiple years of this in the handbook because of what ASB asked us to do. So I will check that. And see if this is the one that we need to be here. Uh because i- if if we need to leave that because of some reasons, I'll leave it and then add the new one. But if not, I'll change it for them and place the new one there. So I'll put that as well.
Okay.
Are there other questions, Ms. Temple?
Uh, I'm gonna bring some, I'll just drop them up to the office. Uh, I don't think I have any questions, but I have some other stuff to.
Okay.
Little things.
You saying that four point four five, the whole thing, or just the year twenty twenty?
Yeah, I was just wondering if it should be squared like twenty twenty-one. I'm just.
Yeah, I I don't wanna, I don't wanna touch that, uh touch the entire thing uh right now. Um what I'll do is I'll pull this policy from ASBA. And then uh I'll make sure that the correct one is in place for our handbook for this current year. So I'm writing that just as a reference.
Is that, is that all your questions, Ms. Temple?
Quite a few parents ask, since this is such an unusual year and getting clothes from stores and returns and all that. Is there gonna be a vacancy in the uh dress code?
That's been a uh conversation that Dr. McGee uh has had with with us. And again, the, some of the things that uh that we're doing for COVID is is different from what maybe in the handbook. Uh if you guys want to, I think I mentioned this before, you guys want to address a policy change about uniforms. We could absolutely do that. Um but right now, we 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 have uniforms in place. Uh we think about uh our our social worker, our district social worker, Ms. Ricker- Riggins. She has a lot of uniform clothing that she's helping parents and families with currently. And and switching uh like that, right, you know, as far as policy. Uh we we have a lot of things over here that we probably wouldn't utilize uh that she's purchased. And and or was donated to her.
Okay, Mr. Stone. Thought in mind, uh since this is a pandemic. And sometimes you may include in your policy. To me, with parents not having jobs. Trying to buy uniforms because she, this, this Riggins basically, she takes care of the homeless. And there are enough of those families that she does that, and then she also provides for those that are needed. But with the pandemic, this may be far more that exceed the needs. And I guess what I'm really saying about that. I would rather see a child just come to school as long as he's neat and clean. I'm more concerned about what the child gets in the head than what they have on their bodies wearing it to school. And at this time, my personal as a person, my priority would not be a uniform. Because I know there are parents out there that are struggling and don't have it. So, since this is pandemic, I'm just expressing this personally for what I see and for what I know. And that's a very good statement, uh Ms. Temple, that you came up with. But my priority, again, Mr. Stone, I know we have this, but in pandemic. Sometimes you have to change, everybody now is changing the rule a little bit. But my att- attitude at this time, as long as a child, a parent may not be able. Now, how many kids over the summer then grew up and grew out? That is not, and then they had the tax last Friday and Saturday, I didn't see a whole lot of folk out there trying to get clothes. So my attitude, basically, Mr. Stone, uh as a board, and it's something for the board to consider. I'm more less was going to child's head than rather than put some uniform he got on his body. Is needing clean during this pandemic, so be it.
Can I, can I say amen to that, Ms. Ms.? I was, I think that we were heading or saying the same thing. Uh what I was saying with the procedure in place, if we wanted to change the policy, I'm not, no problem with that. But the procedures that we're gonna use this year, well, we're not going to just force our parents to go uniform and all that. We're gonna relax on uh the uniform because of COVID, we have different procedures in place. But if we want to address the uniform policy itself, uh you guys would have to vote on that, and that's what I was uh referring to.
Okay, we shall vote on that at the board meeting on the twenty-first, right, twentieth? Are there other concerns from uh?
I don't have a concern, but I just want clarification. Mr. Stone, correct me if I'm wrong. What you're putting into place now is a standard, let's forget COVID for a moment. This is a standard handbook. But then we know that when August twenty-fourth start, there is. There's gonna be different COVID process. Am I making sense? Like on, like on the uh uh uniforms. This is standard. So it's just standard, but we know that when COVID start, we're not gonna turn away a child because they don't have a uniform. Because this is COVID time. Am I making sense?
Correct, that's that's that's.
Is that what we're doing?
That's what we're saying. This this handbook is is what we standardize for our entire district. And but we are in, I think I mentioned, we're in a unique time right now.
Yes.
And so there are some things, procedures that we may uh tweak some for this pandemic time. So that that's what I'm saying.
Okay, that's what I thought. A lot of this is gonna have to be tweaked. On a day by day. What you're trying to do is have a standardized handbook. If nothing was going, if if August twenty-fourth came and there was no COVID, no flu, no nothing. This is a standard handbook, but we know that separately from that, there's gonna be COVID procedures.
That's correct.
Okay.
Uh other questions too? Uh I'm I'm sorry, Ms. Walker, it's on you.
Thank you.
I don't wanna skip you, I'm sorry.
I appreciate that. I I do appreciate the conversation with the uniforms. I do understand and appreciate it. It is COVID. Um I think that is going to be some pressure that we may put on our parents. I would like to possibly forego that. Just this school year possibly until we um get out of the global pandemic. So thank you for that. So thank you for that. And we spoke about the calendar, we spoke about adding, uh, Mr. Kane. And we briefly said something about, um, the COVID protocol. So it, maybe we can do an insert. I understand Dr. Reddick's just made the statement, this is a standard, I get it. But maybe we can do an insert, a flyer of some sort of possibly the ADE response levels of the onsite learning that we placed or went over tonight. Or maybe even a response of what to do when a child tests positive on COVID. We're not tattletaling, you know, stating the names or anything, but we're also stating, you know, this is the procedures. Just like we had the flow chart of, um, chain of command, that's kind of along the lines that I'm thinking. Um, going back to, um, I don't know what page it was, I don't, whatever. Uh, Dr. McGee listed as superintendent, I love that, but maybe we ought to add the word interim just because we are in the middle of a superintendent search. Um, but if we can do something like that possibly, no disrespect to McGee, he's doing a phenomenal job underneath the stress that we all are facing.
Have you noticed, have you noticed in this, I've already done that.
Okay, you got that one. And then scroll down a little bit, uh, not that page, there was another one where you listed everyone.
Okay, right here?
There we go, yep.
In the room?
There we go.
Yes, it's, it's changed.
Okay, perfect. And then also, um, kind of clearing up something Sandy made the comment about the apps, that's the assistant principals. The, um, that's what that was regarding, I feel, is the assistant principals need to be listed as well. When Mr. Kane is out, for whatever reason that happens, um, who else can they get a hold of during that day of time frame? Does that make sense?
It, it, it does, um, it will, we can do that, yes. We can do that. Uh, there's several that, at, at that site, seven eighth, and there's several at the high school. Uh, and it, you know, one for elementary, so we could, we could do that.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Also, I'm so sorry, last statement, if you will. Maybe we can also help direct people to our actual website and not our Facebook pages that are not district led. I know this is not your powers that be at all, but just, um, I know. But at the same time, we have an N L R S D dot org, not, um, something else on social media. That way they can get the information at their fingertips. We've got lots of great information out there. And I feel like the parents are not being, I don't know if directed is the correct word, but they're not getting to the correct page, so to say.
I guess I could, I could, uh, make our site here on the first page, uh, a little, uh, more noticeable. Um, maybe, yeah, let them, let them see our site and maybe they'll be directed to go there. Okay, but I can do that as well.
Okay, you through? Oh, well, my questions are, uh, just for point of information. Who do you work with to make sure that the students are coded correctly and counted? There are another department you work with, the reason I'm asking because you know, we continue to see a decline in students enrollments. And do we know what this year, you know, because we really don't know how this year will look, Mr. Stone?
Well, I work with, uh, when, when you mentioned coded, coding, if.
You know.
If it's, uh.
Correctly counted, counted.
Counted, okay.
Uh huh, coded correctly and counted, because, uh, coded, you know, sometimes get off balance too, sir.
Right, that's the, uh, that's at the building level. Uh, in attendance, and it probably starts within the teacher's classroom where the attendance are, uh, the attendance is taken. Uh, so that's where that, that happens and, and when they're counted, that's how we, we, we get our count from our teachers, uh, taking role. And then it moves to the office and if there's someone at dropping or adding to our buildings, uh, we're decentralized as a registration, um, hub. So it, it happens at all the different offices that are within our schools out there. So I would work with the secretaries or the registers on, on numbers being accurately or, uh, put into our system. And then it goes into, once it's in the system, then I work with, uh, Kathy Hale's office. Uh, she's a SIS person in the district and so we, uh, we work together, uh, as it relates to, to numbers. And then a- as it goes or translate into coding, uh, we, we work with Ms. Riggins on all the proper, uh, homeless coding. Work with Ms. Miller and the academy on all of our ALE, uh, coatings and things like that. Where funding is, is, uh, is a priority.
Okay, next question, explain to us what a graduation contract looks like.
That's something, uh, that's something that the, uh, that's at the high school. Uh, that would, what it looks like, I cannot explain what that looks like. Uh, that will be an, uh, question for your, your high school.
Okay.
Chancellor or, or principal.
Uh, it, what part is it in your handbook about the contract?
The contract, they, well, I don't know what page that's on, but, uh, we can find it. The contract is something that they wanted to add to the handbook, uh, as a, there it is. Okay, the contract, uh, what, 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 what that possibly could look like. And again, I would, I would ask that you talk with the high school about this. Uh, if they have the appropriate number of credits, uh, and, and standing to graduate, they, they sign a contract saying that they're, they're, they're going to have those proper things in place before they could graduate.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, uh, board members, are there other questions and concerns that you would like to ask Mr. Stone? Uh, that when you read this over, you have until the twenty first to submit anything else that you may see, Ms. Temple, did you find anything else?
No, but I do, I do have one question, um, just because communication is such a big issue for us, getting information out to everybody. And since we are going to be doing some things differently from the handbook just this year for COVID, what can we get out to the parents to let them know that these are some of the things that are going to be unique this year? Like, uh, you know, a uniform is going to be optional, uh, pickup's going to be different, those types of things. What can we do to make sure that information's out and out quickly?
Okay, I've started, I, I've started working because, because of the, the, the different departments that are oversee. I've got, I'm collecting different things from transportation to food services to how we're, we're going to be operating this year. And so I'm putting together a procedural type of COVID procedural type thing. So we can add some of those things in there and get those out to our website, get them to, uh, Mr. Barnes. So he can communicate in, in whatever way he feels that is, uh, the best for our district, uh, our parents to receive. And so we'll, we'll get those things together and also, um, with your blessing, we'll get it out as quick as possible. And it may be before your, your board meeting, uh, because that's close to the.
Robo calls, email blast, all of it, yep.
Okay.
And that board meeting is on the twentieth, Mr. Stone. So, uh, anything that you can get changed before then in school is supposed to start on the twenty fourth. So that would only give four days between the time that a parent would have an opportunity to get a book. So you just call us, I'll set it up with Dr. McGee when we can have a, uh, a quick meeting, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, now, are there other questions, board members? Okay, thank you for your time. And at this time, board members, we will officially, let me something. Oh, I forgot on the back. Okay, I don't want to look, overlook anything here, let me see it. Uh, we got the student parent handbook. Okay, the virtual support platform, number seven, with Chris Ratliff, Dr. Burton Reynolds, Laura Smith, and Dr. Sher White. Are you all ready?
Yes, ma'am, we're ready. All right, good evening, Madam President and board members. We wanted to share our proposal for renewal of the K twelve supplemental support programs. We'll be bringing this to you for your approval later, later this month. You should have received information in the workshop packet for you to review that has the information and data. Um, the first three programs that are in there include Waterford, which are K one grades, Edgenuity for grades two through eight, and Apex for grades nine through twelve. These actually provide students with personalized age-appropriate online intervention and extension for the students. Additionally, we will be seeking requests for renewal of N W E A and public impact. N W E A is actually our online formative assessment piece that we use in grades K through ten. Now, this year is different because the state is going to pay for literacy and math in grades K through eight. And so we're going to have savings in those areas. So we're going to be saving money in terms of N W E A. Um, and then the last thing is public impact, that's what supports our district with our opportunity culture implementation. And this has been very, very successful in the efforts with supporting our teachers. These items on these, um, in your document are what, they will be paid using ESA and Title II funds. And I have another piece of information I wanted to share is that we would like to congratulate Mr. Matthew Howe, the principal of Ridge Road Elementary. He's been recognized as a twenty twenty, twenty twenty one Opportunity Culture Fellow. It was based on his strong results he's achieved using the opportunity culture model and his leadership at the school and district. And he's been asked to speak at local and, um, nationwide events. So congratulations, Mr. Howe, and that's an honor for North Little Rock School District. If you have any questions on any of these things that we, these are all up for renewal, these are what we use, what we want to continue using. Um, I have the directors online and actually two consultants here on the Zoom to answer any questions.
Okay, Ms. Smith, did you have anything?
Uh, no, ma'am. We, uh, worked together, um, all of us to put this presentation together tonight. And, um, we are, um, very pleased with what it provides for our students and, um, would hope to continue that.
Dr. White?
No, just same thing, I just echo what she just said, you know, when, when looking at these options, we're really looking at how to bridge that gap between the learning loss that occurred and of course, that summer slide. And we feel like these platforms will certainly do that for us.
Okay, and who was the other person, uh, Ms. Ratliff, who worked with you?
It was me, Dr., it was, it was Dr. Reynolds.
Hey, Dr.
Madam President, I'm still hanging on here. Um, for my, my part was the N W E A and, uh, because that's our testing piece and that, it, Ms. Ratliff explained it exactly how it's going to happen with the savings.
Okay, Dr. Reynolds, how's your mom doing?
She's doing great. I will let her know you asked about her.
Okay, then, no, we were all coworkers, I just thought about who you were. Hey, Ms. Ratliff, can I ask you a question? Who would be the young man who got a special award and what's doing?
Mr. Matthew Howe, the principal of Ridge Road Elementary. He's being recognized nationally as an Opportunity Culture Fellow. And he's actually working and sharing with other principals and teachers, uh, that are looking at the opportunity culture model. He's created a great team, he has some wonderful MCLs over there working hard, working with teachers. And so they recognize that and, and, and have him on their board as a, uh, Opportunity Culture Fellow, they call it.
That is, congratulations, if he's listening, the board want to certainly say how proud we are of you and for all the work that you're doing. And want to thank you, uh, directors of, uh, in the field that, uh, of education, you have been doing a phenomenal job. I can tell you that and I'm very, the board is pleased. The more you do, the less we have to worry about. Thank you. All right, now this time, I can move forward, Madam Secretary told me. Hey, and thank you all for sharing and at this time, we're going to officially open our special board meeting. Uh, let me see here, the North Rock Board of Education offers the Superintendent Special Board Meeting. Uh, Administration Office, twenty four Willow Street, North Rock, Arkansas. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, the meeting will be held via Zoom video conference for participants. Viewers will be able to watch the VA North Rock School District Facebook page live stream. This is Thursday, August the sixth, eight thirty five. I officially called the meeting to order. Ms. Cole would call the roll.
Sandy Campbell. Elizabeth Huggins.
Here.
Rochelle Reddys. Tracy Steele.
Here.
Cindy Temple. Natalie Wonka. Dorothy Williams.
Here.
Officially new business for the twenty 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 one option, but we also present a Dr. P with the interim, interim superintendent. Dr. McGee?
Good evening again, Madam President, members of the board. We're just simply coming asking for approval for our reopening plan. Uh, the fleet plan that was presented tonight at the board meeting, we're just asking the board to approve of those plans. And our option, the prior, the primary option will be the five day traditional. And then the additional option will be the, uh, virtual learning.
Okay, do I have a motion? You are, we, we have to move by the governor, please.
I don't want to, I want to throw a tantrum.
Okay, maybe we can vote.
Okay, Madam President.
Yes.
I so move that we accept the five day face-to-face death sentence of the North Little Rock School District because of the governor.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded with five directors of the Arkansas State Department and our governor. Those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, none, the motion is carried. And thank you for the support of opening our school and our school will officially open.
August the twenty fourth, Madam President.
All right, and so therefore it is done and parents, uh, we're doing, the board is doing for every director to do. So blame us, we're just trying to save our children, save, save parents, save our staff. But thank you for your support, thank you, don't leave us.
May I say something before we go to the next item, please? I, I just want to, I just want to make sure our parents and our constituents and stakeholders understand that. We certainly want them to know that their safety is our number one priority, priority. And we're going to continue as a team, uh, trying to make sure that we're doing everything we can in place to ensure the well-being of everyone. So I, I just want to again reiterate, uh, those plans and the work that we're doing, that we will continue to work and collaborate with doctors and the Department of Health and everybody to try to do our best to make sure everybody is safe. We certainly appreciate our parents' support and all of our staff, uh, we support them as well for their efforts and make sure that we reopen school as safe as possible.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Uh, were there comments from board? Thank you. Okay, at this time, the motion was carried and our school, when our school will be open in August the twenty fourth. Okay, the next, employment of personnel classified and licensed by Dr. Jacob Smith, who is Executive Director of Human Resources. Dr. Smith?
Thank you again, Madam President. Um, so we have our employment of personnel for classified and licensed. Um, there is one thing I want to make note of, Karen Pounders, um, is the Assistant Principal at Lakewood Elementary. That was mislabeled, she will be moving to the parent engagement facilitator at that site. So there was no transfer of staff or anything, but I wanted to make everybody aware of that.
Okay, now hold up, what explained to us and Dr. Smith, she'll still be Assistant Principal?
Yes, ma'am. The only thing that, uh, occurred in that, uh, position was the parent engagement facilitator vacated. And so she will be serving in that role at Lakewood.
Okay, clarity, so she will be doing two jobs and we will be paying her for both?
No, ma'am, it is not two separate jobs, um, it is a role that is filled and kind of a point of contact. I think there might be a stipend associated with it, but I would have to check.
Uh, so her time will be dedicated to each position and so you, how will she be paid?
The same way the other one was paid, ma'am.
Oh, excuse me, I hear what you're saying, but that's not clear to me, Dr. Smith. Uh, I know you get paid from the school, but what I'm trying to find out. Uh, I know you get paid from the school, but what I'm trying to find out, two, you told me wasn't two different salaries. But what presented, you said maybe a stipend. So what is that stipend, sir? Come on, Dr. Smith.
I will have to look that up, ma'am.
Uh-huh, I thought so. You trying to be smart?
I'm not trying to be smart.
You got on that suit tonight.
Madam President, uh, and board members, i- i- it usually, the stipend is right around just a thousand dollars now.
I think that's correct.
Maybe just a little, maybe a little less, but that's usually just a, uh, one-time stipend around a thousand dollars.
Okay, we already paying parent engagement facilities a whole lot, but I just wanna make sure, uh, we have a good culture here, Dr. Smith, that we being fair and equitable with everybody, okay?
Yes, ma'am. There is a difference between the parent engagement, uh, facilitator and the PEP. Those are not the two. Those are not the same things we're having a conversation about. So I just wanted to make that clarification. We sent an email out district-wide, but we were getting questions. We wanted our parents to know that there was no transfer from school to school in regards to that staff member.
And so, uh, I, I, Ms. Campbell, you having a question? Okay, Ms. Huggins?
Uh, I know the question's been raised about, uh, Mr. A- Anderson, is that right? Yeah. Um, and I just want to be clear that we did post that job and we did interview people for that job and we accepted applications for that job.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so you posted it and everything, and, uh, he did send us the rankings today. There were two, uh, there was one other gentleman who did that. Okay, and then the, uh, counselor at high school, uh, that job was what, Dr. Smith?
Uh, yes, ma'am, that job was not accepted. And so we had already submitted our report in regards to that. We always leave those on there, but we will remove the position based on not being accepted. And so, um, we will go through our processes to fill that position as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Very fine job, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, we, board loves everybody, but hearings are not our favorite thing, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, at this time, board members, uh, he has presented two, uh, the classified and the licensed. So at this time, we will ne- need a motion from someone.
One quick question, please.
Yes.
Okay, and I know under the classified personnel, we had three that said new positions. And I remember that we voted on, um, the H fact position. But tell me about the, uh, let's see, the paraprofessional at the North Little Rock Academy and the lead custodian at Seventh Street. You said those are new positions. Is that something we'd already voted to have those new positions or what, what's happening there? Just so I understand.
It should have said vacant. I apologize. It should be vacant positions. Those are already existing.
Okay. All right, I'm good.
Okay, so did he answer your question properly? Ms. Temple?
Yes, if they're vacant, then that's fine. But I, I just wonder why they're new ones.
Yes, ma'am. I, I can provide you the paperwork if need be for the vacated position.
Okay, so the only thing we're basically asking as a board, every time we have a hire, before you put a new position out there, uh, let the board approve that position and then you go back and you post a position. That's all. And sometimes it's little small things, but the board needs to be involved. So when people call us, we can give them some answers, okay? You did good, Dr. Smith, but just remember that, okay?
Always.
Well, that suit all the time. Now you answering real good tonight. Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that we, uh, ex- uh, accept the employment of personnel classified or licensed presented by Dr. Smith.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we accept the recommendation on the classified and licensed personnel for hire presented by Dr. Smith. Those in favor say aye.
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 We have any?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and properly. Madam's vote. Thank you. So the motion has been carried. Thank you. So at this time, the proposed district calendar, Dr. Smith?
Um, yes, ma'am. Um, I don't want to go through the whole thing again, um, but we had a, uh, discussion. And I wanna thank the L P P C and C P P C for all working with me, um, through this time. This has been unique for everybody. And I've talked to, uh, human resource directors across the state. And, uh, e- everybody has been very encouraging in regards to how everybody is functioning through this time. And, um, I just wanna thank the board and L P P C and C P P C and staff for being so responsive and working with me through this process. And we ended up here and, um, we had a unanimous vote of approval on both committees. And so I hope this provides a better outcome for our teaching and, um, classified staff.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam President.
Yes.
I so move that we accept the calendar presented to us tonight.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we accept the calendar presented by Dr. Smith for the year twenty-one twenty. Damn, is that the right date?
Yes, let's go home.
Yes.
All right. All in favor say aye.
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 Can I say thank you, Dr. Smith, and you did a great job, cause I know that was a hard task.
Thank you, guys.
Motion has been carried, so that we approve the, uh, calendar for the school year. Uh, thank you, board members. And Dr. McGee, would you like to close out, not with prayer? I wish I could, but forget.
Go ahead and pray. We need some prayers. Yeah, but we don't need to be sued. Okay, fine.
Well, board members, I wanna say thank you, uh, again for your support, again to our parents and our constituents and our community stakeholders. Uh, I want you to know that we are still gonna continue to work with, uh, together to ensure a safe, effective, uh, school year. Uh, again, we just wanna say thank you, everyone. I wanna thank all of our building principals and administrators and and their leadership team, counselors and central office. But a special thanks also to our custodial staff. Our custodial staff, uh, have, they have been doing an excellent job. And, uh, I, I, I don't wanna leave them out. I wanna thank all of them for their hard work. This is already un- uh, uncharted times, but one thing about it, uh, I will say this, that I am certain that we have the best teachers to prepare and educate, uh, uh, students. And I'm also certain that we have the best administrative team that's gonna make sure that we do what's best in keeping all of everyone safe and secure. Again, board members, thank you guys so much, and I wish everybody have a good evening. And please, uh, uh, wear your mask, stay safe, wear your mask, please.
Oh, thank you, uh, for the gift that you all gave. They gave us T-shirts, those that you are not here, and they gave us masks for North Rock. Walkums and see Dr. McGee. They gave us one of each color. And so, uh, don't, and what is the conclave date, Dr. McGee, that they spoke to?
Thank you, yes, uh, August the fourteenth, uh, we have our convocation. Uh, we are gonna be doing it virtual. Uh, we'll send a link out to the board, uh, so that they can watch it if you like. It'll be done virtually. We're just gonna come and welcome our teachers back. And, and, uh, so, so thank you, guys. Thank you for everything.
All right, and board members, I certainly thank you for everything. It is now eight forty-eight.
Madam Chair.
In our community, we wanna say stay safe until we meet again.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
And moved and properly seconded that we adjourn. Those in favor say aye. Forty-nine, the meeting is over.